Welcome, everybody. We will begin our meeting. It is 5:30, 5:35 PM on Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. We're gathered at the City Center Municipal Council Chambers at 351 West Center in Provo, Utah. This meeting is being broadcast live on the web on the Provo City Council YouTube channel, where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. The council requests that attendees help maintain the decorum of the meeting by silencing electronic devices, being respectful to others, and refraining from applause or other outbursts during the proceedings of the meeting. I will begin with a roll call.
Cliff Stracken.
Brian Jones.
Travis Obin.
David Shipley.
Bill Fillmore.
George Handley.
David Harding.
Dave Sewell.
Shannon Ellsworth.
Mayor Kafusi.
Wayne Parker.
All right, we will begin with an opening prayer that will be given by Beth Allagood, and then we will have the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Cliff Stracken.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We will begin on our agenda with item number one, which is an introduction of the new Grandview South Neighborhood Chair. This will be introduced by our very own Karen Tapahy.
Thank you. We recently had an election in the Grandview South Neighborhood. Doug Gardner had served a little over three years, decided this was a good point to turn things over to someone new. And in the meeting, it was a unanimous election of Mindy Jepson as the new neighborhood chair. Now, she's been serving as a vice chair for some time, so it's not completely new to her, and she's brought one of her vice chairs with her. I'm going to have her come up and talk to you a little bit about the Grandview South Neighborhood.
Good evening, council. We come from, Erin Adams, Vice Chair, and myself come from Grandview South, a neighborhood that is multi-generational. Children who are raised there seek to come back and raise their own families there. Three-quarters of our neighborhood committee is in that particular situation. We have purchased homes of relatives directly or purchased homes next to relatives. We love the neighborhood program and appreciate the city council's support of it, particularly the neighborhood grant program. And we partnered with River Grove for our first neighborhood grant a few years back to install solar lights in Lyons Park. And we look forward to carrying on in that theme of looking at the bigger picture of how to improve our neighborhood over the very long term. As you may be aware, River Grove has invested the last 10 years of neighborhood grants to improve Lyons Park. We will be having our third service project in Lyons Park in May. We appreciate working with the city so generously on that project and look forward to, hopefully, some neighborhood grants to come in the coming years to improve our neighborhood and potentially Rotary Park specifically. Again, we look forward to working together to improve Provo generally and the Grandview area specifically.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve. All right, we'll go on to item number two, which is a presentation on the Tempe View Trail Neighborhood Matching Grant Project in the Indian Hills neighborhood, and this will be introduced by Joshua Kilpak.
So, I'm Joshua Kilpak, and I live in the Indian Hills neighborhood, and there is a trail that is used by high school students going to Tempe View High School, elementary school students going to Edgemont, and there's some people who just use it for exercise because it is a really pretty area. But the trail is 50 years old, I think, and it was starting to fall apart really bad. So, we decided that we wanted to repave it. So, I got, I was able to secure the Neighborhood Matching Funds Program, which we are very thankful for because it really helped us be able to achieve the, be able to get the amount of money that we needed. So, what we did to earn the other money is we had a GoFundMe, and between that and door-to-door donations, we raised $4,000. And then with our 100-plus volunteers, it's about 106, and 200-plus hours, we were able to achieve the necessary requirements for the matching funds. So, to repave it, we had two companies that helped do it. It was Quality Paving Asphalt and Bonneville Asphalt, and it was $9,200. And it took about six weeks to complete, and yeah, that's it. And there's a video that we made about what it looked like before and after.
All right, way to go. Thank you so much, Joshua. That's extraordinary. Hey, thank you for being such a good citizen and doing such a great job. A nice soundtrack from Coldplay, I like it. All right, we will now begin our public comment period before, for, I'll have my colleague, Brian Jones, explain how this will work.
As indicated on the screen in this table, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, 15 minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Additional time may be given to individuals specifically invited to speak, such as applicants, neighborhood chairs, or others that may be representing additional persons. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Okay, so any public comment on any items that are not on our agenda this evening, you're welcome to approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll begin with our action agenda with item number three, a resolution consenting to the appointment of individuals to various boards and commissions. And this will be our Mayor Kafusi who will present.
Thank you, Council Chair Handley and Vice Chair Harding and council members. I am recommending the following appointments to the Provo City Boards and Commissions. And let me tell you about the first one. The first one is for Housing Authority, and it's Beth Allagood. And Beth, if you're here, will you stand? Thank you. Let me tell you a little bit about Beth. Beth has served as a neighborhood chair and area representative in Provo for four years. I am recommending Beth to be appointed to the Housing Authority with her term ending June 30th, 2020, completing John Cowell's term. And that, for the audience, that's like really short, and you're like, what are you doing? But she has to complete a term, and then we're hoping she likes us enough that we can reappoint her. Okay. Thanks, Beth. I'll just go through them all, if that's okay. And then on the Library Board, there you are. I'm recommending David be appointed to the Library Board, ending December 31st, 2023, replacing George Stewart. And then on our Arts Council, I would like to recommend, is Zach?
I saw, I thought I saw Zach in here. Nope, he's not here.
Let me tell you a little bit about Zach. You've met Zach. Zach owns Improv Broadway, which is the only comedy theater and school in Provo, and I am recommending Zach be appointed to the Arts Council, ending June 30th, 2023. And then Tom Taylor.
Oh, there you are, Tom, stand up.
Great. Tom has worked with artists and arts since 1981. Tom has also had many collaborations with various artists in both artistic and entrepreneurial activities, and I am recommending Tom be appointed to the Arts Council, ending June 30th, 2023. And Darren, we all met Darren earlier. Darren has been involved in the film and music industry his entire life, but full-time and professionally for the last 14 years, all while living and working in Provo. Darren's most recent work includes being a senior producer on the TV show Relative Race for BYU TV, and I am recommending Darren be appointed to the Arts Council, ending June 30th, 2023. So, with that said, those are my five latest appointments. Do you have any questions for me? Okay.
Thank you. And we will open this for any public comment. If there's no public comment, we will call for a vote on the implied motion unless there's any discussion.
Chair?
Yes.
I mean, I'd like to commend the mayor for some great appointments, and...
Doesn't seem to be working.
And thank those who will be serving on the board.
All right. So, I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to item number four, an implied motion on a resolution appropriating $15,000 in the general fund for a public bike rack expansion project. This will be presented, actually, the next couple of items will be presented by David Mortensen.
Thank you, Chair Handley. So, this motion will be for a resolution appropriating $15,000 in the general fund for a public bike rack expansion project. And as was discussed in the work meeting, the funding for this project comes from the agreement that we made with Zagster Scooters. As part of that, we brought in some funds to use for this project. If there are any questions about the project, we do have Austin here that can answer questions about details.
Any questions for Mr. Mortensen or for Mr. Taylor?
So, how many are we talking about and where would they be located?
So, of the $15,000, $10,000 would be used for very basic bike racks. It would be 80 bike racks, and they would be throughout town, but only on public property. So, it could be parks, it could be curbside. We will place them heavily in downtown, but then other areas as there's demand. And then the other $5,000 will be a bike rack that's custom designed to look like the Provo City logo, and it will be prominently placed downtown.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Oh, we got a microphone. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. We will call for a vote on the implied motion. All in favor? And it is unanimous. I did not, yeah. Sorry, let me go back. If there's any public comment on the bike, on the appropriation for bike rack expansion from the public, we're welcome, you're welcome to approach the podium. Okay, sorry about that, I got out of order. Okay, we'll move on to item number five, a resolution, implied motion on a resolution transferring 200,000 from the Community and Neighborhood Services Department to the Development Services Department, and this is also presented by David Mortensen.
Yes, thank you. So, this fiscal year, fiscal year '20, is the first year of these two separate departments. Previously, they were one department, the Community Development Department. During the budget process, last January through June, the best attempt was made to figure out how these departments would be split, but there is some correction that needs to be made to ensure that Development Services has the budget needed to pay for their personnel. So, that's the reason for this request of transfer of 200,000 of budget from one department to another, both within the general fund.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, any comment from the public on this item? All right, any discussion on the council? I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to item number six, an implied motion on a resolution appropriating $26,819.85 in the general fund for reimbursement to satisfy the participation and reimbursement agreement with Parkway Village Provo Holdings LLC. And this is also by David Mortensen.
Thank you. Yeah, so this request is coming from our Economic Development Division as part of the prior agreement for economic development, appropriating this, just over 26, almost $27,000, to make this reimbursement payment. If there's any questions, we also have Dixon Holmes here that can answer questions.
Any questions? Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll call, I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number seven, an implied motion on a resolution appropriating $3,638,455 in grant funds and sale proceeds for the design and construction of a new roadway utilities and infrastructure at the Mountain Vista Business Center, and this will also be presented by David Mortensen.
Thank you. So, yes, we applied for a 50-50 match grant with EDA for this project, and we're awarded that grant. So, half of that appropriation of $3,638,455 would come from that grant fund. The other half of that funding comes from the sale of property with the intention, when we sold the property, to do this work at Mountain Vista Business Park. Also, if there's any further questions about it, Dixon's here to answer.
Okay. Any questions? Any comment? Oh, yes, Mr. Harding.
Just verify that, I forget the acronym you used already, but that's a federal grant, correct?
Yes, this is the Economic Development Administration, which is a division of the Department of Commerce. This is the third grant that we received at Mountain Vista. We also received one at Duncan Aviation, their 50-50 matching grant. The city had pledged full faith and credit of the city in order to get the grant, and it was intended that once we sold a large chunk of property, this would actually be providing the matching from that portion of the sale.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any comment from the public? All right, I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. All in favor? It is unanimous. All right, we'll turn to item number eight, which is a joint resolution of the Provo City Mayor and Municipal Council urging support for educating consumers about where Tier 3 gasoline is sold, and this will be presented by John Magnus, our City Council Policy Analyst.
Back in January, the Mayor Sustainability and Natural Resources Committee came to and asked you to pass a resolution supporting Tier 3 gas and the manufacturing of Tier 3 gas in Utah. Since that time, there's been some changes. We went through and edited down, but is still asking the state legislator to support Tier 3 gas manufacturing and to educate the drivers where they can find Tier 3 gas.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Magnus? Any comments from the public? All right, we'll bring it back to the City Council for any discussion. I'll call for a vote then on the implied motion. All in favor? Voting is unanimous. Oh, that all items were so efficient and fast. Wow. Okay, item number nine has been continued. We'll continue to item number 10, which is an implied an implied motion on an ordinance amending Provo City Code to allow restaurants with ancillary microbrewing as a permitted use in certain zones. And Aaron Ardmore, Provo City Planner, will present.
Thank you. If you may recall, this was continued from last month. So the study of different issues that arose in the last hearing could be studied further. And not much has changed from staff's point of view. There are a couple of things I want to just make note of on the record. I did receive an email from PEG Development in stating their support. They wanted to let that be known to the council. If I just might read it, it's pretty brief. It says, "PEG Company supports the proposed amendment based on the FOLAN criteria. The amendment received overwhelming support from the community. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the amendment. There is no distinction between a restaurant with a microbrewery and any other restaurant with a Class B liquor license, meaning that the proposed amendment is not deviating from the practices already allowed. The proposed amendment is consistent with established procedures set forth by the Department of Alcoholic Beverages Control. There's a strong support from downtown business owners and the Utah Valley Convention Center as allowing ancillary microbreweries is anticipated to help attract and retain a diversity of uses in downtown. And according to Springville Police, the recently opened microbrewery in their city has not caused a negative effect to the public safety." Also, just making note on the survey that went out, as you're all aware of, we received positive response from that. I believe out of 573 responses, about 70% of those claim living in Provo. There's a vast majority in support of the proposed amendment, over 80%. So other than that, just noting that staff and planning commission also both support this ordinance amendment. So I'll try to answer any questions if you have them for staff.
Any questions for Mr. Ardmore? Thank you. Were we going to get a presentation on the Open City Hall results?
Yes, we actually have, Mr. Peterson is here as representing DPI. And then John Magnus and Hannah Salzil are here to present on their findings.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Peterson, please.
I mentioned to a couple of you in the hallway before we got in here that you have to be a crazy person to run for city council because you definitely receive a lot of hatred from supporters and from haters. And you have to make really hard choices. So I do not envy your situation currently. I wanted also clarify that we're here specifically representing the Business Alliance Downtown, Downtown Provo, Inc. Our board is comprised of property owners, business owners, the universities that helped create our downtown. And they're the ones that voted for this to be a priority and voted for this position that we're advocating for. I think that we've expressed most of the things we needed to say in the last meeting and was requested that data was gathered during the last meeting. And now that data referenced was the survey which was just mentioned. And I do believe that the number was closer to 1,500 responses. Was that it? 1,300 responses that did respond and show support. I also was able to go out and interact with a lot of the business community to hear concerns and support for this issue. I had one additional support letter that I didn't get a chance to share yet. It's from Qualtrics. We decided to act on the brew pub proposal largely because of companies like Qualtrics who've expressed concern with their recruiting abilities as they recruit all over the country to bring people into Provo. It's difficult convincing them to live in Provo because they live maybe a different lifestyle. And so a lot of them are living in Park City and Salt Lake and commuting. And so I wondered if that was a position that they felt comfortable sharing. So the recruiting department received approval from Qualtrics. And here's just a brief thing I'll read. Ally says, "I asked a number of the team members whether or not it would be to our benefit to have a brew pub in town, and the answer was unanimously a resounding yes. Our talent brand team also pointed me to our glass door reviews. Here are some of the cons in that category that I found pertaining to Provo and the lack of activity and sufficient drinking establishments." And then there's a series of surveys, respondents that she shared that I won't read to you now. But I appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward and good luck on making your decision.
Thank you.
Any questions for me, I guess?
Any questions?
Just to clarify, Qualtrics did a survey, and their survey came back saying that people were in favor of this.
Oh, I hadn't seen that.
No, that's what I'm clarifying with you.
No, no, this was...
Their talent team?
So we went to Qualtrics asking if there was anyone within their corporation that wanted to have a position on this issue. And they voted yes. The recruiting department was going to be the voice to voice that. So the recruiting department, who is the one that goes around the country recruiting talent for the company, this was the position that came from that team specifically.
Right, but you're saying that in her response, that team created a survey?
No, I'm sorry. That was a misunderstanding. This is just a survey that they naturally send out to their employees in the process of being hired. And she went through and found several comments in that process that people had left over the past number of years that were pertaining to this issue.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Peterson. You might, we might have questions for you at some point, but thank you. Mr. Magnus.
Okay, start with, the survey was conducted January 30th until February 11th. There were 1,342 respondents, and of those, there were 546 registered users. Means we know these were individuals. They weren't spiking as we track them. The survey was designed using issues brought up in the January 21st, 2020 council meeting. That's where they got the questions from. I know there's been some response. This is a push poll. It was always meant to be a push poll. We were pushing the ideas that were put forth that night. Some said they were one-sided. I agree, they were one-sided, but we were trying to make questions. And some of the stuff that was being said that night wasn't a factual question about a brew pub, more about alcohol use in general. And that would create a different survey for us. Still not scientific. We do have errors. Our survey was self-selecting, which meant people who are interested came and took the survey, much like a city council meeting. They come because they're concerned about the issue. It's not a sample of the general public. We oversampled males, which caused some issues. Oversampled two age groups. We had to wait the data to correct it. Waiting itself causes sampling errors. We undersampled males 21 to 29. I put this down because it was three times below the normal, which would cause errors in our weighting of samples. When we weighted it, we were trying to line it back into gender and age distribution for the city of Provo using United States Census Bureau information of 2018 is the latest they had. In the end, we had an open-ended question. Tell us what you, explain what you want or anything we missed. We took all those down from a myriad of questions, and we got them down to nine categories, which I'll go over later. This is how we did our survey outreach. This is how we got people out to the public. Karen, you want to take over?
So we have heard from a few people that they weren't aware of, whoa. Okay. That they weren't aware of this survey being out and that the council was taking input. So just wanted to kind of review that. We, those who subscribe to our Open City Hall platform, we pushed out a notification to all of them that there was a survey open, and there were 842 people subscribed at that time. We've gained several hundred since. I put a blog post on the council's blog that had 84 views. That was also shared on Facebook and Twitter as well. Our council Facebook page, we did several different posts, the initial one being the, hey, we've got a survey, you know, and let us know what you think. Shared that 76 times. Roughly half of those are from me pushing it out to the neighborhoods and other Facebook groups. And they reached over 10,000 people in being shared. Now, Facebook would count each of those as individuals. So no matter how many times I look at it, I'm still one person. And then other ones reached 100 here, 200 there, 300 there. And were shared just a minimal number of times. But we did get them out there over the four weeks that we, well, about three weeks after we had the survey available. And as far as sharing them, they were shared into four of the groups on Facebook that regularly discuss local Provo issues and downtown things, as well as 32 neighborhood groups. And then the rest of those shares would have been to other people's groups or their personal Facebook timelines. We posted it on our council Twitter account a bunch of different times during, you know, times a day, different days. And then neighborhood chairs were asked to send it out to their email list. I'm not, I may not be on everyone, so I'm not sure how many followed through with that. We put it in the council's newsletter, which reached 693 recipients. That was also shared on Facebook and had 202 people click through to see the newsletter. As far as other publicity, the Mayor Citizen Connect project was perfect timing because just when it landed in mailboxes, we were launching that survey, and it mentioned Open City Hall. And so people that might have been curious about Open City Hall would have seen that survey right away. And that project also got coverage in the Daily Herald. And then, of course, this item has been through the usual process of, you know, being noticed to neighborhood chairs, then on the planning commission agenda, and noticed for our council meeting. And then after the January 21st meeting, we had the Daily Herald article that talked about that and wanting more input. And then while the survey was open, we had quite a few news outlets cover it. And then even after the survey was closed, Associated Press picked it up. And we got probably more publicity than we necessarily cared for. Back to John's stuff.
Thank you.
I'll go through all this quick. So this is the weighted female by age. As you can see, on the left-hand side of the screen, it says not, that's not supportive. That's a collapse of not at all or not supportive. We do see as age increases, opposition increases to it. The insurers, there's not very many of it. And then on the other side, the support, it's the same thing. It's the inverse. It's the younger, the younger the group, the more supportive they are. They work their way down. This is weighted, so it represents the actual population and gender of Provo. This is the male. There's problems with this one because we had to wait. And because the 20 to 20-year-olds was not a large enough sample, it created errors across everything else. But you still get the same rise that as the older they get, the less supportive they are. Younger they are, the more supportive. When you combine it back in, it takes some of the errors out and it smoothes it off a little bit. But it's the same thing. As a group, the older people disapprove, and the younger people are more supportive. This is a comparison between the unweighted and weighted. You see that you still get the same kind of smoothing on the lines. This is a female male comparison. Females are more supportive. The dark blue is the female weighted. That means it represents Provo. And the orange next to it is weighted male. And then we have the unweighted female and the unweighted male and the last two. In both cases, the females are more supportive than males. Then we looked at registered users who don't live in Provo. And the problem is the sample size is a little small, so it's going to have errors in it, but you'll notice that it changes on the age. The older generation was more supportive. And that helps explain some of the skewing we saw in the overall data. This is the residents, the registered residents against all respondents, all 1,300. The support, there's only two points difference, which statistically is insignificant. And then we asked the question, how many drinks do you have in a week? We were trying to see if people would, that don't drink, if they would support this. And the support came in at 64, very, very supportive. If you collapse it in with the other support, it goes to 76. It's about 10 points lower than the general population of the data, the whole. We asked them how important is public safety? We had them scale it one to five. This is a question prior to the first ballot, so they weren't, these were just baselines we're looking for. They weren't primed to think about this in relation to the question. And they still, even though they rated public safety very supportive, you still get 75% of people, or 75% of people are still supportive of the approval. There was a question about, the police see no negative effects. It was a push question. I was asked to look at that and how that affected the support, very support. So what happens is the people who said that that is a very influential thing for them to think about while they're going through this, you can see the support side is very high. Those are raw numbers. First ballot, second ballot doesn't change that much. When the person gave an answer that the police said there's no problem with having a facility like this downtown, and they said that would not sway their decision at all. You see, the not supporters are in that category, and they're not swayed by any of the messages between first and second ballot. This was the open-ended questions. Took them all. We quantified them down to nine. Positive economic impact, that rate 16%. Positive community impact was 26, which was the largest. Same as existing restaurants, that was 6%. Not opposed to because of morals, that was 9%. No negative effect on public safety was 8%. Negative effect on the community was five. Morally opposed to alcohol was nine. Against because of value was 13. And believe it or not, a lot of people are confused on the licensing, and they thought you guys were being too restrictive at that 70/30 split. Just shows you they didn't read the beginning and they didn't understand what they're looking at. Going back to this one question about the Provo question influencing, what we see between the two and at the second ballot, that when the people made up their minds, nothing we said or did during the push changed it. It was insignificant. We had one or two points changing. So the push poll really didn't change anybody's mind. They came and made up, they read the questions, they went through the push, and they came out the back end pretty much the same. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Magnus. Any questions for Mr. Magnus?
Oh, this last poll's districts. We broke that out this afternoon.
Mr. Hoben had asked regarding his district, so I thought, considering the discussion this afternoon, obviously, we can only determine the district from those who signed in as registered participants, but it kind of gives you a breakdown in the various areas of the city as to whether they were supportive or not.
Thank you. Mr. Strachan?
Mr. Magnus, could you explain to us the difference between what the relevance is between the unregistered and the registered?
The unregistered, we were afraid they could spike it. You get somebody to take the poll six, seven times. There was evidence of spiking. But when you overlay that curve on top of the registered curve, there wasn't much difference. There was spiking on both sides. There was evidence of it. And we're within two points, so it really couldn't matter. The first ballot, as I said, didn't change with the second ballot, but it was two points difference and only moved. So if they were very unsupportive or not supportive at all, they moved to not supportive. And same on the other side. They didn't cross anywhere. They didn't go tomorrow and decide it.
And you also expressed in your first three slides that the survey was not scientific. What is the strength and weakness of this kind of questionnaire?
This is to get a general pulse. People that are interested in this issue will come up and take this poll. Strength of it is it's cheap, it's easy to do, they're self-reporting, we don't have to pay a pollster to go out and find random surveys. If the council wanted to take this and correct the data, correct the errors in it, because it is self-selecting, there is software. I use it, I used to use it in my other job. It's called Stata. There's things we can do to manipulate it to correct it. Takes time and money. And at that point, you're not having a representative democracy, you're having a direct democracy because you're going to go with what everybody wants. That wasn't what we were here to do. We were here to just give you a snapshot of the people who are interested. And this is what this is. It saved you 45 hours of public testimony.
Thank you. If I could just add, as a city council chair, especially since I think I was one of the people who was wanting more feedback from Open City Hall, I think I can let my colleagues say anything they would like to about this, but we understand... say anything they would like to about this, but we understand the difference between a scientific survey and an Open City Hall. I mean, as a professor, I read student evaluations every semester. It's pretty self-selected. And I know that it's not an actual representation of what every single student in my class might think, but it's qualitative data that helps me with my own reasoning as I listen to the reasoning of other people. So, I think I can say on behalf of my colleagues that we took this as a valuable opportunity for the community to be more engaged. We were concerned, as we always are, that the community doesn't always know enough about what's happening at the city level. And it's hard to get the word out all the time, and so, it seemed like a valuable way to extend the conversation as if we were extending a public comment period. And as Mr. Magnus mentioned, it was 45 pages of comments and 44 hours essentially of public comment that we have read through in preparation for tonight's meeting. So, we feel like, I think it's been overall a good thing. But I just want to reassure people that we don't treat it as a scientific representation of exactly what the community feels, but we also take it seriously. I guess that's the fine line I'm trying to delineate a little bit. And I think, anyway, I just wanted to make sure that there, you know, if we spent the money every time for a survey, we would not have any money left in the city. So, it's expensive to do that, and this is a helpful way for us to be more informed about how you're feeling.
Council, we also, you'd also asked for some questions that Hannah Salzle, she's done some research on, she's going to report to you on that.
Thank you.
Findings as well.
Just to begin, the things that I'll discuss are all in the reports that are attached to the agenda items. Those can be found for the public. Those can be found at agendas.provo.org. If you sign in, or if you pull up the website, you can open the agenda for the council meeting. You'll see highlighted items for the agenda. Click on item 10, and you will see all the various attachments. If you want more details on these reports, I'm going through at a very high level. Also, the full survey analysis. Just a quick overview, the details for the proposed amendment. The brew pubs, restaurants with ancillary breweries, would only be permitted in the general downtown, downtown core, and regional shopping center zones. It would not permit off-site consumption. This is only restaurants that serve beer that they made on-site for patrons to consume on-site. Restaurants that sell alcohol are not permitted to let patrons take open containers of alcohol with them. They may also not sell alcohol for consumption off-site. You can't buy a can to take away. That could be an issue for a future council, but it's not part of this proposal. The Division of Alcoholic Beverage Control, the DABC, at the state, has several regulations that would apply to restaurants with ancillary breweries. For example, at least 70% of sales revenue must come from food sales, not from alcohol. Minors may not sit at the bar if it has a bar area and obviously may not be served alcohol. They have to card anyone who looks like they're 35 or younger. Patrons may not leave with open containers of alcohol. Patrons may also not buy beer unless they're also purchasing food items from the restaurant in the same transaction. Provo also has several regulations for restaurants that serve alcohol. For example, they must be well-lit with an open view, as cited here in code, without this dark bar sort of feel that you often see on TV. Employees must be trained and will lose their beer handler's permit if they serve a patron who is already intoxicated, serve a minor, break any of the other rules. City code also permits excessive consumption, as does state code, saying that beer should not be sold to any intoxicated person. And employees are trained in that as part of their basic employee training. The DABC, that Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, conducts random audits as well as annual audits. All establishments and restaurants that serve alcohol must apply for their license annually, and it is on them to prove to the DABC that they're meeting all regulations. Law enforcement also frequently sends in undercover officers to places that serve alcohol. For Provo City Code, if there are any code violations, the city has a scheme of fines leading up to forfeiture of a license for more severe or frequent offenses. As far as public safety goes, there is more detail on this report and report number three at agendas.provo.org. Police departments that we've interviewed had no concerns, including our own Provo police, St. George, Springville, and Lehigh, which all had fairly recent brew pub openings. Boise, including the Idaho State Police, and Nampa, Idaho, another university town with several brew pubs going back ages. There was, among these interviewed cities, they saw no increases in drunk driving citations due to new brew pubs. There was some unreviewed research in North Carolina that said that increases in brew pubs led to increases in DUI citations there, but it, again, was not peer-reviewed. And North Carolina has actively sought more brew pubs to come to their state. So, not directly translatable, but some evidence that it could be correlated. Brew pubs can sell higher alcohol by volume than what you would find at most grocery stores or convenience stores. The general state limit is 5% alcohol by volume for to-go sales and for on-tap beer, but brew pubs can in closed containers smaller than one liter for on-site consumption sell alcohol by beverage that is higher than 5%. For example, Strat Pink has one that goes up to 11%. That's their highest. It's thought that that might be the reason why some brew pubs have led to increased DUI citations, is that it can be difficult for a person who's used to drinking one can of beer at 5% to gauge what their blood alcohol content might be if they're drinking something that's 11%. As far as the economic impact, that really depends on the success of the restaurant, which varies depending on a lot of different economic factors. It is not itself, brew pubs are not themselves major economic development initiatives for Provo. Provo only collects 0.6% in taxes from sales revenues, but we could recapture sales from some patrons going to other cities that might come to Provo, for example, instead of Springville or Lehigh. The major boost that could be seen economically would be the diversification of the downtown area that would make the downtown and convention center likely more appealing. You can see the brew pub testimonials and council letter that Quinn mentioned earlier, again, at agendas.provo.org. There was a letter, this council letter, from the Downtown Redevelopment Services, which is an agency that coordinates events around the country. They work with different downtowns to revitalize them and help them draw events to their area, found that in 75% of the downtowns they'd worked with, they saw an overall economic increase from brew pubs having moved into the area or filling general gap services, things that were missing. So, for example, Provo has a vibrant downtown. No one's arguing that. But this could be one of those gap services that's missing. According to Downtown Redevelopment Services definitions, in areas that added brew pubs as a gap service, they saw an average, an increase in downtown attendance of 22% to 26%. More time spent downtown, averaging about 30 minutes per person. Average point-of-sale tax capture, that's city tax revenue, of $193,450 annually, and 32% to 36% increase in people identifying the downtown as a destination trip, the reason that they go there and not just incidental to whatever they're doing there. There are some negative economic impacts from excessive drinking, but addiction experts and other sources have said that that is generally unlikely to happen in brew pubs. It's very expensive to get drunk at a brew pub. The brew pub is invested in protecting its atmosphere and doesn't want that sort of drunkenness to be associated with their restaurant. The council does have future licensing options separate to the land use being voted on today. You could amend the Class B beer license currently in code, create a new Class F beer license. You could also introduce a sunrise clause option, which would mean that if, for example, you were to permit brew pubs as a permitted use in these three zones, that would not take effect until certain criteria had been met. For example, it would not take effect until July 1st or until the licensure had been approved and worked out. So, you could avoid a gap period where brew pubs were permitted but did not have any applicable licensing. Just note, as a final closing note, that any licensing restrictions would have to apply to all locations that serve alcohol unless the city has an articulable, rational reason why it should only apply to brew pubs. The rule constitutionally must be applied evenly to establishments that serve alcohol. Staff are available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from the city council? All right. We would like to open this now for public comment. And before we do that, I just want to reiterate a few rules that we'd like you to follow, if that would be, if you'd be so kind. We'd like you to state your name and your residence, and we'd like you to be aware that there will be a timer that will begin as soon as you start speaking that will beep at two minutes. I will let you finish whatever sentence you're in the middle of, but I would appreciate your cooperation in wrapping up as soon as possible after you hear that beep. So, just be aware. You actually should be able to see on the screen how much time you have left. So, that might be, there you go, there's the little box. So, that should help you. And I, we welcome the chance to hear from everyone here tonight. It doesn't look like this is the size of a crowd that will keep us here until very late hours. We didn't know if that was going to be the case or not, but I still would like to ask for your restraint and recognize, of course, that we want to hear from anybody who feels they want to speak. We have already done one public hearing a month ago, and as I mentioned, we've read quite a bit of public comment already. And that's not to say we're tired of it. I just mean to say, if the point has been made, maybe, or if you've already shared your point of view, you may decide you don't need to repeat it. But we would also ask for civility. By that, I mean that we don't want to have any outbursts or applause so we can listen to each other respectfully. That's very, very important to us. All right. So, anybody who'd like to come forward to the podium, the time is yours. And let me remind everyone again to please state your name and your residence. And city residence.
I'm Bonnie Marshall. I've lived in Provo nearly 50 years. In fact, Michelle grew up in my neighborhood. My husband taught at BYU for 41 years, and I used to be involved in a lot of public, a lot of Provo City committees and things like this. And I've always loved, I better be short. I've always loved Provo, and I love the standards this city has in comparison to the world. It's always been a very clean, wholesome, wonderful environment. And BYU students are important to our community. But so is the whole community. I'm overwhelmed by all of the statistics. I did do the survey on the news, or online, but I didn't really get exactly what it was all about. And I have spoken to many, many people, and they really, we're not aware. Maybe it's just my age group, that we're just not on Twitter and all of these things that we know, you know, people are watching. But I feel very strongly that a brew pub, as wholesome as it may be and all the rules, will only make drinking more attractive. And I don't think our youth need any more people appealing or situations appealing to them to drink. And everyone I talk to really is opposed to it, but maybe it's just my generation. But Provo's a great place, and it's been a great place for nearly 50 years that I've lived here and before that, too. And I would really like to appeal to you to not vote on this, not allow that to pass. There's so many things that can raise revenues for our city, and it didn't look like the tax increase would be that tremendous to put our kids at risk and give them more temptations to drink. And I guess I'm done.
Thank you so much.
My name is Steve Christensen. I'm a resident of Provo.
Please start the clock. Sorry. The clock hasn't started, so I just want to make sure it gets started. Thank you.
The libertarian in me says, "Let them sell what they want to sell unless it hurts me." The libertarian in me says, "It hurts me." I had two sons in rehab. We buried one son the day before his 20th birthday. The other is an officer in Alcoholics Anonymous. I asked that son if Alcoholics Anonymous would be interested in taking a position on this potential zone change. He said, "No, AA doesn't take positions on matters like this." I said, "Well, what do you think? Will this increase drinking? We've got shiny versus plain, exotic versus regular." He laughed a little and said, "Sure, it will increase drinking. We'll see a few of them at our meetings in the future." You don't walk into a brew pub and come out and get a DUI. This is a long-term issue. So, we're not talking about prohibition here. We're talking about, and we're not talking about everyone becoming an alcoholic by going into a brew pub, but there will be some that will. We should be concerned about efforts to make alcohol more attractive or more appealing by the environment, making it family-friendly, or attaching it to good food. The cool dudes of downtown have said that craft beer is the in thing. Apparently, some visitors and businesses don't even come to Provo because we don't have it. Should we make this change to cater to those who base their Provo go or no-go decision on our alcohol? This is much more than a simple request for a change of zoning. It's a change of direction in how we view Provo and where Provo should be headed. The business of this council is not to cater to the financial interests of a few, but for the safety and welfare of all. It's not to be in lockstep with the latest fads of the world.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Sam Olman. I'm a resident of Provo for, just moved in 50 years ago. I remember Keith lunch down here. Didn't serve beer. They had a case of beer on the wall. You could buy a beer, and you could serve it to yourself. And I don't drink beer. I never did, I never did learn to like it. I wish I had liked it because there's so many people that I hang out with that enjoy it. But the best food in Salt Lake is at the beer pubs or brew pubs. And it's cheap there. I don't know, maybe the beer pays for the help and you just get free food. But if the food has anything to do with a brew pub, I'm way into it. And I don't think anybody at a beer place will force anybody to have a beer. I've never seen that. I grew up in a place where there's lots of beer and lots of kids died on the freeway. But it's down at the 7-Eleven. I don't know what else to say. And thank you guys for, good food is always good, by the way.
My name is Ian Dalton. I'm a Provo resident. I became a Provo resident by chance. I moved here around seven years ago with not really the intention of becoming a Provo resident. I was moving to Provo to date, and then it just worked out, and now we're here. And so, my wife is a BYU graduate. We both live, work, and play in Provo. We love the amazing amenities that Provo offers with its vibrant downtown, with the beautiful natural and outdoor activities that surround us with the mountains and the lake. And speaking to my wife and talking to her, we're both non-drinkers, but we're both supportive of the idea of making Provo a more inclusive place, of encouraging the diversity that institutions like brew pubs can offer, making it more appealing to businesses and to people who may not be as like-minded as we are, but are still people that we value the same. And we look forward to rubbing shoulders with those people in interactions as we work, as we live, and as we play here in Provo. And so, I had no real intention of coming up and talking today, but I would encourage you to vote your conscience, but I also encourage you to consider the good things that can come from opening these kinds of doors to other people, to allowing Provo to become a bigger world for those who look to come here to do business here, to live here, and to contribute to the home that Provo has become for me and to meet- And I think anything that, you know, allows people to get good food and something that's unique to the community adds to the destination. We bring in event planners and meeting planners all the time to discuss holding their event here in town, and I think it would add to the appeal. I don't think anybody's walking away from us because we don't have a brew pub, but I know that it is one of the, they've just become very popular, and I think it adds to the character, adds to the flavor of a community. And even though we want to keep it small, nobody's trying to change as far as the perception, I think it will go a long ways in being welcoming to the community, welcoming to folks that want a unique experience. And we've seen the success in Lehigh and also in Springville. And again, it's usually for the food. I mean, here, they've got to have a business model that can survive on the food because we're not, we don't push that much alcohol. And I think that the strap tank in both Springville and Lehigh have proven that you can serve good food, and you can have that model, and it works. So I appreciate your thoughtful discussion, and I know it's a hard decision because you need to represent the community as well, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lillian Wilkinson. I was born and raised in Provo. I recently bought a house across the street from my parents in Provo, and I personally choose not to drink, but I think that there are people in Provo who do drink, and I would rather their tax money come to Provo than someplace else. So I would, I am for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ashley, and I grew up in Provo, and I very much love Provo. And I recently moved back from the Bay Area after about a decade of being there. And I actually don't drink beer either, so I'm surprised to recognize that this is an issue that I feel strongly about. And I think a lot of it has to do with, the sense that when I left Provo, I left with a fear of the other. And I left with a fear in believing that people that did things different than me were somehow bad or not doing things right. And I quickly realized that I was very wrong, and I repented of that, and I recognized that difference is a really beautiful thing. And as someone of a younger generation who is raising kids in Provo and plans to stay here, I recognize more and more that we have a huge gap between others. And I feel like saying that a brew pub is not welcome, cannot come here, does a lot to further that gap, particularly to people, and more and more as we speak of Provo as kind of a global center, as a place that we want people to come for businesses, to do startups. We've had several friends come from the Bay Area, and whether we want it to be portrayed this way or not, I think it is offensive to say that we do not provide something that is, something that seems good and normal and beautiful to you. So I've spent time in brew pubs with friends, and they are really vibrant, beautiful places. And so I think basing any decisions out of fear of what the other might bring will never serve us as a community and as a city. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Larissa Davis. I live in Provo, and I've been here since 2004. And I actually worked with the Chamber of Commerce like eight years ago, and I remember how the liquor laws really affected restaurants coming here, you know, even eight years ago. I feel like, you know, people are going to choose their standards. Inviting a brewery is not going to change their standards. And I think, again, it's important not just to think about the direct money from the brewery, but the variety of people and other businesses that might come here. I think, thinking about Qualtrics and what their recruiting people said, those are all important things to consider. I myself don't drink, but I have other family members who do, and to have another nice, clean, open option for them would be, would be great. And so, yes, I support this.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I rushed to get here. I'm George Frye. I've lived in Provo for 38 years, and I have dealt with issues like this for a long time. And I think the biggest issue the state of Utah will face, and maybe Mayor Cavusi will be part of that, you know, if the election comes forward, and Provo is, in the next decade, are we going to expand the fabric of our community and open it up to be more inclusive? Are we going to let it be destroyed and maybe rebuilt? If it's destroyed, we'll lose all the good of our heritage that we built over generations. But if we open it up and expand it, we can keep that and add to it. And I think this is a great opportunity to do that, in the sense that it will open up, make others feel more welcome here. And I looked at this in a strange way. I grew up in Colorado, and I remember when the Mormon temple there was proposed in the 80s, and there was a lot of people fighting it. And most of it was well-informed misconceptions of what it would do, you know, that the Mormons will take over and traffic, and, you know, missionaries will go door-to-door, and, you know, it was really sort of funny, but it was misconceptions. And Denver would probably welcome a couple brew pubs, and no questions asked. This is, we in Provo would probably welcome another temple with no questions asked. And the question is, is our concerns misconceptions, well-intended? And I think they are. I think by opening up our community, we can make it better, more inclusive, and more friendly to everybody, so we can expand that fabric. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Blue Adams. Born, raised, lived in Provo my whole life. Also own a few businesses here, and that's a little bit about what I want to speak to. I have a few friends that drive for Uber, and they make a lot of their money with long trips, taking patrons out of Provo to other cities to eat, drink, et cetera. And as a business owner, that is concerning for me because I'd like them to stay here, spend their money here, and I'm even opening a new business, and we're more of a lunch crowd. And if we can keep the dinner crowd here, maybe they'll come to us for lunch. So that was my main concern with supporting, getting a brew pub here, is getting the residual business to come and come to my businesses downtown. And I love the downtown. I've watched it change over the last 30 years, and I'm really excited, and I think this will be a great benefit to us as business, other business owners downtown. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sherri Spencer. Mazer neighborhood, right down here. I'll start out maybe with a little bit of humor. Jimmy Fallon, on his little notes thing that he does, he said, "Thank you craft breweries for making my drinking problem seem like a neat hobby." Craft, these are, I'm going to quote out of some articles. "Craft beer has made it easier to mask alcoholism and disguise it as craft beer appreciation. In recent years, the craft beer trend has somehow elevated beer drinking into a cool, artsy lifestyle. Suddenly, beer tasting is a thing. And if you tell people that you're a craft beer enthusiast, that is considered a perfectly acceptable social hobby." And then there's other articles. These are the people that are concerned about alcoholism and have experienced the draw that craft beer is, and it's drawing in people that haven't done it before. It's, they talk about the fun promotions and events and things. So consider that. It's been talked about that it's harmless, and I think it's enticing. The other thing to consider is, consider the parents of the students who are one of our biggest tourist people that come, and their desires as we think of the other people. I work and travel all over the world all the time. I can, I understand other people, and I have very dear friends all over the world. I don't think Provo, being the unique place that it is, needs to make sure that we have all the varieties of beer and alcohol for everyone around the world. I don't think my friends expect it. I think they appreciate that we're unique. They appreciate that we hold to our standards and create a wholesome environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Hall, Provo resident. I don't drink. The only time I ever had a sip of alcohol is when I was in a club in New York and they gave me the wrong drink. They fixed it, didn't like it, not my thing. But I just want to say, like, you know, addiction's a disease. It's not usually fed by expensive alcohols. Not everybody who drinks is going to become an alcoholic. Just want to say that. This is an opportunity to teach our young adults and our children what alcohol is and to use it responsibly if they're going to do it. Shame only brings curiosity. I didn't want to do alcohol because my mom taught me about alcohol and what it does, and it prevented me from wanting to do it. Shaming is not the way to live life. It's, this is a good opportunity to teach your kids that these things exist out there. Marijuana's out there, smoking's out there, all of these drugs are out there. Pretending that it doesn't exist isn't going to help your kids at all. Not having a brew pub isn't going to prevent alcohol or drinking either. It's going to prevent a classier environment or these learning opportunities for your kids. Just, brew pubs are great. I'm for it. Teach your kids responsibly. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dean Judd. I'm a resident of Provo my entire life. Also own a business here, right on Center Street in Provo, restaurant. As a matter of fact, we do not serve alcohol, but I'm in favor of this new change. I think alcohol would be, a brew pub would be beneficial for downtown Provo. We need more diversity. I think it'll add some more diversity, so anyways, I'm in favor of.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chad Pritchard. I'm a resident of Provo, and I'm also a business owner in Provo. Met a mayor, members of the council. H.P. Lovecraft once said that "The oldest and strongest emotion of mankind is fear," and that "The oldest and strongest kind of fear is fear of the unknown." Many things that we've talked about and have debates over and have gone back and forth about are based on fear, not just fear of anything known, but fear of the unknown, fear of the what-if, what will be, or what may become. As a business owner in downtown Provo, I've had many liquor licenses as a restaurateur. One of the safest places that people who are going to drink can drink is in a restaurant. In fact, the DABC, the DABC, two years ago, in the legislative session, passed, or helped pass a bill that removed the dining club license, which allowed more drinking and less eating, in favor of more liquor licenses for restaurants. Restaurants that have a 30/70 split, 70% of the sales must be food versus 30% of alcohol, which is the same split that would be required for a brew pub. I don't plan to open a brew pub. I don't have any desire to do that. I own, I own a pizza restaurant, Italian restaurants, and that's where I make my money. That and other forms of liquor, I would not want to brew that and all the things that go into it. It is not the purview of the government and of the city council to stand in the way of the free market. If this isn't something that Provo wants, then Provo residents will decide that by not going to that restaurant and by not partaking in that business. It is the job of the city council to make business accessible. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any further comment from the public?
I appreciate your work and efforts, and I appreciate the chance to approach the council and the mayor. I really appreciate.
Please state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Roxanne Hadfield, 20-year resident of Provo.
Thank you.
Councilman David Sewell has sent out emails, and we appreciate his update about this situation. And we feel that a brew pub would not be in the best interest of our community. We're already a leader in the state, as Mr. Sewell has acknowledged, that we have terms of economic productivity. We're the most stone-cold sober university, and I feel in a way that that's why these, the brew pub wants to come here to Provo so that it can make fun of Provo. Look, they were the sober one, but now we're going to come and change this community. And we might be the, you know, part of jokes across the nation. I don't know. And so I understand the gentleman who spoke about fear. Maybe we're making decisions on fear, but maybe we have reasons for those fears. Maybe we have loved ones who have died from alcoholism. I do. I don't drink, but I'm connected to people who do drink. I go to lunch with my friends who drink. I have friends who don't drink. I think I'm a well-rounded citizen. And as far as the survey goes, I try to be very involved in the community in elections, and in so many ways. But honestly, surveying in other ways, I may have not caught that survey. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jordan Bartholomew, downtown Provo resident. I've lived here for about 20 years of my 28 years of life. I lived a lot of my adult life in Salt Lake City, but I chose to live in Provo because Provo is my home, because I had a professor in college who Look, they were the sober one, but now we're going to come and change this community. And we might be the, you know, uh, part of jokes across the nation, I don't know. And so, I understand the gentleman who spoke about fear. Maybe we're making decisions on fear, but maybe we have reasons for those fears. Maybe we have loved ones who have died from alcoholism. I do. I don't drink, but I'm connected to people who do drink. I go to lunch with my friends who drink. I have friends who don't drink. I think I'm a well-in, well-rounded citizen. And as far as the survey goes, I try to be very involved in the community in elections and in so many ways. But honestly, surveying in other ways, I may have not caught that survey. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jordan Bartholomew, a downtown Provo resident. Um, I've lived here for about, uh, twenty years of my twenty-eight years of life. Um, I lived a lot, uh, of my adult life in Salt Lake City. Uh, but I chose to live in Provo because Provo is my home. Um, because I had a professor in college who said, "You can go somewhere that's a good place or you can make where you are a better place." Um, so I chose to come home. Uh, I run a nonprofit here, I try to make the community a better place. Um, and I think this is a way to make the community a better place for more people, for a larger, uh, diverseer, like more diverse, sorry, uh, a more diverse group, um, a more inviting home. Uh, 'cause sometimes when I'm here, uh, 'cause I, I do drink, um, I, I might be one of the only ones speaking today who does, uh, but I like to have the occasional drink. Um, but sometimes I do not feel like I'm at home, I feel ostracized. Um, uh, but I feel like this is a way of reaching out and showing people that, um, all different types of people are welcome in Provo. Um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather Scapland. I live in the Franklin neighborhood and we've been residents here for ten years. I'll just add that I also drink and I drink responsibly and I would like, um, just to add my support for the brew pub. And while I'm at it, I don't know if this was talked about because I got here late, but in addition, I would like to add my support for, um, the money, twenty, I think it's the twenty-five K to go towards some public, um, bike rack installation. And that would be super beneficial if we got a brew pub and then had really great bike racks. Thanks.
Thank you. I didn't put those two together, but I.
Good evening. Dave Connect. Like to just, uh, read into the record the email that was sent to the council. The following former Provo city council members would like you to know that they are opposed to this brew pub ordinance and do not believe it'll promote the health, safety, and welfare of Provo. David Atchison, Don Butler, Callie Hales, Dave Connect, Stan Lockhart, Cindy Richards, Kim Santiago, George Stewart, Kay Van Buren, and Paul Warner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Snuck in with the baby here. Um, my name's Rachel Faverro, I am a member of the Mazur neighborhood for the last few years, just over a few years.
Excuse me, please start the clock.
Oh.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
I'll be good. Um, I am somebody who also drinks on occasion, even in my own home, of things that I brewed on my own. It's a traditional process that I was able to learn from studying recipes of my great-grandfathers. Um, so it's not something that I grew up with. My family, when we were in, uh, visiting a sister who moved out to Milwaukee for medical school, we kept asking because there were so many breweries in that area and so my parents took us on a tour of a brewery. And it was fascinating to see that process, just like it's fascinating to go to a donut shop and see how everything's made. Um, but having a little information, you know, didn't turn me into a kid who was drinking behind the bleachers in high school, along with that information of seeing the process. My parents gave me the information of what alco- what alcohol does to the body and why there's a law already set that we don't drink until we're twenty-one because of the brain developing and the body developing and all these things. So, I'm just here in favor of more access and just giving every person, particularly parents, the right and responsibility to educate themselves and their kids around them and not move forward based on fear or concerns of things that we just haven't had our own experiences of yet.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tosh Metzgerleven Provo. Um, I'm a business owner in Provo as well. Um, I think a lot of people know my stand on this. I think it's a business decision, I think it's being proactive. Um, I think a lot of restaurants here already sell it anyway. The only difference is, is we're asking if it's okay for them to brew it on site as opposed to getting it from somewhere else. And I think we have to keep that in mind as well. Um, I think it's good for our downtown, we're having an airport expanding, we have a convention center we're supporting, there's more to it than just not drinking. It's, this is a big deal, it's a big for Provo, it's good for having this conversation. But I think in the end, business-wise, it's a smart move. I think we should do it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is McKay Linker. I live in Mazur and I'm a high school teacher here in Provo. Um, and I was sitting here thinking, you guys have heard this, different sides of this, like, for the last two weeks, right? So, I don't think I can, like, share any new position, but, um, just thinking about this, I'm kinda new to, like, city government and being more involved, but, um, just from looking at the survey, the overwhelming positive reaction and response to this ordinance being passed. And also just, I have a really strong love for downtown and I wish more people would come here to see, like, the art, the food, all the things that we have. It just makes sense to pass this ordinance because I don't think it will negatively impact the people who are against it, but it will very strongly positively impact the people who want it and our business and our city overall. And, um, so yes, I am really hoping that, I've been hearing some things like, oh, city government is, you know, it's kind of disheartening or maybe it'll let you down, but I'm hoping that I won't be let down tonight and that my city council will vote in favor because I think that's what's best for Provo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a sec, where's the clock?
Right there.
Just a sec, okay. Thank you. My name's Cindy Richards and I've lived in downtown Provo for forty-two years. I grew up in the San Francisco Bay area, right by Stanford. Matter of fact, when I got engaged to my husband, who's from Bountiful, my husband's first words were, my, my mother's first words were, "You want to live in, in Utah the rest of your life?", like it was some backwards, you know, place to live. So, I wouldn't say that any of my comments are coming from fear or prejudice or concerns like that, but what my comments are coming as having sat in your seats, you have that duty. I mean, your ordinance says this, "The proposed amendment reasonably furthers the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Provo City." The citizens of Provo City. General health, safety, welfare. If you Google the question, "Is alcohol a drug?", this is what it says. Alcohol is a drug. It is classified as a CNS. I have a daughter in medicine. A CNS depressant of the central nervous system, which means that drinking alcohol slows down brain functioning, neuroactivity, and further reduces the functioning of various vital functions in the body. Just fact-based, your decision is based on, does this further the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Provo City? Alcohol's a drug, why make it more enticing?
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Havik Hendricks. I'm a artist, I live in the Mazur neighborhood. Um, I don't think it's a, obviously a question of bringing alcohol into Provo because it's available through many varieties and places already, but this is a question of what kind of alcoholic experience do we wanna bring into Provo? Um, I've had a lot of conversations throughout the years with many acquaintances, um, about the two bars. Uh, I haven't been to either of them, but from, from what they say, it, it's not their scene, they don't like that. Uh, it's, it is like the bars that you see in movies, it's very dark and it's another kind of atmosphere and they, and they crave a, uh, an experience that's more, um, to, to their standard of, of quality of life, I guess, not saying, saying that that's, the other one is low-quality, but, but, um, they, right now they have few options and this would give them an experience to have, uh, an alcoholic experience that was, uh, anyways. Um, the other thing I wanted to say is that, um, alcohol is not good and it's not bad, uh, just like water, water can save your life. 'Cause you, you need it to stay alive, but it can also kill you if you drowned in it. And, um, to make alcohol associated with morals or ethics or is it good or bad is, is, is irrelevant, in my opinion, because alcohol is not good or bad, it's, it's, it's an inanimate object. Um, it can be used badly and it can be used responsibly and, and good, it can be used for good. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Julia Smoot and I have lived in downtown Provo for about forty-five years. And over that forty-five years, I've seen a lot of changes in Provo City and I feel like downtown Provo is, um, after forty-five years, we've, uh, accomplished some great goals through city councils and, um, with city councilmen who have protected the family values of Provo and feel like downtown Provo is a very family-friendly place and I think we should try to preserve that as much as possible. Um, I feel like this, I'm very opposed to this. I think, um, culturally, we need to protect that family environment and I've traveled the world and when I go to other places, if there's a country or a culture that doesn't provide pork, you know, I'm not upset that pork isn't served when I want it, I'm accepting of their cultures. So, I know that seems a bit random. I was also wondering why no one's talking about, uh, use of our precious resources such as water. Uh, a brewery takes a lot of water, this is not a concern. It feels like we have enough other places that people can get alcoholic drinks if they prefer, so, um, I ask you please to vote against it and preserve Provo as a family-friendly city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sage Pearson. I'm a resident of the Joaquin neighborhood. I've been a resident of Provo for twenty years, it seems crazy to say that out loud. Um, I just want to say, um, there are a couple of things that have been brought up that have zero to do with this situation, such as saying this is going against family values, this is going against the kind of community we wanna be. First of all, there are a lot of ways that families can look and exist and be that are healthy and happy and to say the way that your family is, um, is the only way and the only healthy way is totally false. I am a drinker, I have a family, I help to educate my children about drinking responsibly when they are of the correct age, we have conversations with them about it already. Um, I would much rather have it be out in the open and be a good example for my children of how to drink responsibly than to have them do it behind my back or, you know, sneak around and not be able to talk to me about it. I think that's way, way more damaging to young children. Um, second of all, we are trying to make this a conversation about health and safety of Provo. I mean, a BYU professor, I was just reading an article about how he has, he talks about how incredibly addicted to sugar the majority of people in Utah are and how people in Utah consume about twice as much candy as anyone else in the United States. So, if we really wanna have a conversation about health and safety, let's talk about how many different places I can call or go online and order cookies to my house in the middle of the night. So, if you don't wanna regulate that, let's take a step back and have maybe a little more balanced view on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Noah Kerschisnik, I, uh, live in Provo as well. Um, I, I was thinking about, um, having a conversation with a man at church at an LDS con- congregation. He had, uh, he was wanting to come back to church. He hadn't been in a long time, he had, and he had a lot of tattoos on his arms. And he was talking to me and saying, you know, "I need this community, I want this thing and I can't connect with anyone because they just, they see my tattoos and they can't. They can't accept that, they can't accept me as a person." And he didn't stay very long, he was a really nice guy, he was a really good guy, I really liked him. Um, I stayed friends with him, you know, but, um, he didn't feel welcome in the community. And it's interesting to me to, yeah, like, the previous person, sorry, said, I can't remember your name, uh, the idea that, like, my way is the only way and I can't accept you and in fact, I don't want you in my city, I don't want you in my life and my city. You know, it's very damaging on a fam- fa- family level, um, and a community level. I love Provo, I also drink occasionally. Um, I love Provo, I don't wanna leave, I'm an actor and, you know, I, people always say, "When are you gonna move to LA?" And I don't wanna move to LA, I hate LA, I like Provo. Um, and I like Utah. And then on an economic thing, I mean, I'm not a business person, but if, if I wanna drink with friends, we can go to the, to the state liquor store and we can spend six dollars on a bottle of vodka, you can get a bottle of vodka for six dollars. Now, how much of that money, you know, they have to buy that vodka from Russia or wherever they made it, and we go, we get the taxes to stay in Utah and then the people who here who work at the liquor store, other than that, it all goes away. No, we, or we could go to a brew pub and spend six dollars per glass, we're not gonna drink nearly as much. And not only do the taxes stay here, but all of the, you know, this is brewed locally, it's not going, not going out of the state. Um, it's more money in the community. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any more comment from the public?
Good evening, my name is Cheryl Lee Wilson. I own a business here in Provo. We do business around the world, we've been people here from around the world. One thing that people really enjoy about Provo is the family atmosphere, is the difference that's here in Provo. Alcohol in my family and extended family has destroyed many people. It's not about making money, it's not about acceptance, it's about families, it's about health, it's about keeping families together and not destroying some of the things that people we value and love. If you wanna talk to some people, go talk to people at the CIRK that are right here that treat alcoholism and various forms of dysfunction that come from that. It isn't a healthy thing. It not only destroys families, it destroys bodies. And I'm really opposed to this measure and hope that our comments, that you will really consider and that it will matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Hendricks and I'm a Provo resident, I live in the Mazur neighborhood. And like so many people here, I love Provo and I, um, my husband and I both work for ourselves and we can work anywhere in the world or live anywhere in the world and we choose Provo because, um, we love it and it's become our home and our friends and family are here. Um, I'm in favor of, of this, um, because I would just would hope that you would not only consider including outside people that come to visit, but Provo residents and the people that love this community and, um, whether it's comfortable for people or not to, um, understand that Provo is getting more diverse and I think it's, um, the diversity is, and those people who are different than, um, what other standards might be, they're the ones that are also making Provo great. And, um, I just hoped that you would consider that it's not only making other people feel welcome, but the people that live here and, um, that they will only feel better about staying and, um, wanting to raise their families here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dean Chessman, I am a Provo resident, uh, live here in the Franklin neighborhood. And, um, I, I think a lot of people have brought up, you know, the economic benefits of this, of this and they talk about a direct correlation between the dollar sold and the amount of cents of that dollar sold of beer that brings in economic development. But for me more, the thing I think about is the conversation I have with people living around the state or around the country. Um, and the thought that a place like Provo, if, if we were to say no to something like this, uh, I mean, sure, maybe, maybe you think you're not encouraging drinking as much, maybe, and I, to be honest, I, I drink, but I think people probably should drink less. But that doesn't mean I don't think this should be, still be some- But that doesn't mean I don't think this should be, still be something that we should allow here. What, going back to my original point though, when we say no to things like this, I think we are saying to people, we're not welcoming people from out, from, that we're not used to here, that are not like us here. And I think that has more of an economic impact than not getting those dollar sales for like the one beer you're not selling because it's not going to the beer pub. I mean, when we're saying to people that Provo is a place where we don't want businesses to come in and, and sell alcohol because we're not welcome to that. We don't want people that aren't like, that don't believe the same thing as us bringing their business here. Yeah. So, I would encourage you all to be in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Clark Goldsberry. I was born and raised here in Provo and I love the city a whole lot. I just want to say a couple of short things. The first place that I ever encountered a microbrewery was on a Mormon mission. I was in Connecticut and I knocked on a door and somebody said, "Hey, come in and you might want to see this." And they had a microbrewery set up in their, in their kitchen. And they said, "This bachelor making is actually Brigham Young's favorite recipe," which kind of blew my mind. And so what I want to say is, people who make alcohol or who drink alcohol are not bad. And I'm a, I'm a big supporter of diversity and inclusion here in our community. I, I know that our community is thriving and growing and I think that any measure toward diversity, inclusion is good. I don't drink, but I appreciate the artistry that goes into a microbrewery or a pub. I'm a high school art teacher as well and I think that any, any movement toward creating more inclusivity toward makers and artisans in our community is valuable and good. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comment from the public?
Hi, my name is Nicole De Arange and I'm a resident of Provo since two thousand and three. And so, I went to Westridge, Westridge Elementary, Dixon Middle School and Provo High School. I also attended Brigham Young University and studied exercise and wellness and majored in family life. And I consider Provo as a safe haven. I also spent some time in Northern California where there's beautiful wineries, breweries and vineyards and that was what their, their cities were based on, right? And I, I feel like Provo, I, when I came back, I was like, yes, I'm coming back to the safe haven Provo. And this is where, you know, I don't have to, you know, be as concerned. Of course, there's going to be, I consider myself progressive and also very open-minded. But the thing is if there's accessibility and proximity, you know, and more to these types of places, then there's adverse outcomes for people who don't know about. I think there needs to be more conversations about alcohol. And so, we need to make sure that they're educated about that. However, a lot of people don't know about it and if there's easy access, more access to these alcohol places, then they'll have adverse outcomes. I have a cousin who, he was depressed and he lived in Salt Lake City and he went and he almost committed suicide by hitting himself. And then I have another cousin who gets fun, you know, when he consumes alcohol. However, his wife gets angry when she consumes alcohol. So, it's always an experiment, you know, and people don't know what will happen until they have it. And their family is in process of possibly breaking up. They have five kids. They might get divorced. And so, I think we need to limit the alcohol. We need to keep the family values and the things that keeps Provo different from other places.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Buddy Richards, resident in Provo for a long time. Just, we've talked a lot about inclusion and those kinds of issues and I, I am sympathetic to those kinds of concerns. We, we couldn't be much more open to people, but I'm not sure that increasing the intake of alcohol is the best way to do that. For me, it's one of those that would say, we know the, the effects. There's no way that you're going to create a, a pub without encouraging people to drink. That's, the impact of that is, is real and it will have its impact on Provo in some interesting kinds of ways. If we want to deal with the issues of how do we help people feel well-included, I'm not sure this is the best way to try to do that. I, I would hope you vote no. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Osler and I've lived in Utah for about twenty-three years, about twenty-two years of that in Provo. And we live in the Franklin neighborhood and I just want to express that families exist beautifully that have alcohol in their homes. Mine being one of them, my parents being another. I understand there are addiction issues. I work with that in my work. I just feel like we can all make our own choices. We're adults and we should be able to do that. I would much rather spend my money and keep it in Provo than keep going up to Lehigh or down to Springville. Excuse me. And I'm just in support of that.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Matthews. I live in the River Bottoms neighborhood. I've been there for forty-five years and I was born and raised in Las Vegas. And I saw that town with all the problems that it has and not interested in having Provo go in that direction. We say, "Well, people need to have a right to choose." That's true, but do we want to allow gambling? Do we want to allow prostitution? Do we want to allow free use of drugs and let people choose here in Provo? I don't think that's the direction we want to go. So, I'm very much opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think unless there are any further comments from the public, we will bring it back to the council for discussion. Any comments or discussion from the council? Mr. Harding?
Question for clarification. At least in some of the reports, I think it was perhaps the memo, talked about a sunrise clause. I was curious, is that part of the implied motion? Just want to get clarification on that.
It is not part of the implied motion, but we do have a draft that I've already.
Thank you. And if I could just ask, perhaps more for the, the public than the council, but if I could ask, can we show what the changes, the, what changes would be made to Provo City code if, if the implied motion passes? I think it was on that last document. Yeah. So, I think we just, we passed the first one. So, right now, we're talking about land, a land use, adding a land use of brewery when attached and ancillary to a restaurant.
And I guess just for brevity, there's three different exhibits. That exact same change is just being proposed to be made to three different zones. So, there'd be three different zones where that particular land use code would be added to the permitted uses and that's the, that's the change.
Okay. And then I guess last thing, just to make sure everyone, that we're all clear. I believe it was Ms. Ozal earlier mentioned that if this was, is approved, we would have an approved land use that would not have a relevant or applicable license at the time. And so, we would need to address licensing in the, in the future or perhaps with the sunrise clause, we would, anyway, could, could we just have a little more clarification on that?
Sure. So, in Provo City code, there are five different kinds of beer licenses that the city can issue, A through E. And the class B license is the license that currently exists that would apply to restaurants that serve alcohol. So, of which there's already a large number in the city. But there is not a specific license, specific to this new land use of being able to brew on-site if you are a restaurant that serves alcohol. So, what's been proposed and discussed in many of our meetings is that if this land use ordinance amendment that's being proposed tonight were to pass, the next step would be that the city council would then also have to amend chapter six point one four of the city code to create or, or amend one of the license, one of the beer licenses in that chapter so that a business that wanted to do this could actually get a business license. And so, the idea of the sunrise clause, just to flesh that out since that was brought up is, we, we have, we've drafted, if, if requested by the council, a different version that instead of having the standard language of saying this ordinance takes place immediately upon being posted and published, it instead says this ordinance takes, takes place upon the effective date of an ordinance that amends chapter six point one four to create a license applicable to a brewery, ancillary to and attached to a restaurant. Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Hoben?
I thought there'd be lots of discussion.
I, I think there will be.
I was hoping this was going to be real exciting.
We're just waiting for you to make it exciting.
That's why you're starting, Travis.
I've been trying to hold my tongue. I get myself in trouble. Well, I, I really just want to say thank you to all of you. You all are awesome. I mean, this is, Provo's awesome and you guys are what make Provo awesome. The amount of engagement and how passionate people are and just how involved. I mean, this is so cool to me. I, I really appreciated all the comments that we heard tonight and previously. All the emails, as annoying as they are, I actually do like getting them because they help to inform me and educate me and also just help me feel a little bit what you're feeling. I've been very touched with a lot of the stories about how people's lives have been impacted by alcohol, but also a lot of great stories about people sharing their thoughts on, on how awesome Provo is. I am taking this decision very seriously. This is how serious it is for me. My wife, Vicki, told me to vote no and so, I'm coming into this meeting with the full understanding that if I, if I were to vote yes, that I'm sleeping on the couch tonight. So, this is, I understand this is an important decision for many of you. I grew up pretty conservatively. I, I probably am still than, than a lot of you out there, pretty, pretty conservative when it comes to substance use as well. You know, David Shipley told me I should recuse myself because I told him that I was upset when BYU started serving caffeine. And I'm not going to recuse myself for that, but he might, might have a point there. But I, on the flip side, I also am, am very comfortable in brew pubs, having traveled a lot for work. You know, I, I prefer them over a lot of the other places that some of my coworkers and customers might choose to go to just because I, I know that they won't drink as excessively there as some of the bars and such. And the food is, is usually pretty good. So, I've got, you know, mixed personal feelings here, but to me, I've, I've just decided that this can't be a personal decision tonight. It has to be a practical decision. And I'm going to read a few things because I don't want to stumble, stumble along and I don't want to take up everybody's time. So, I, I, for me, this decision comes down to the question of what will change if we approve this request and how much of a benefit or detriment will those changes be to Provo long-term? Or I guess is this a neutral decision and it doesn't matter at all? I think it does matter. I, I reached out to a lot of people. In addition to reading all the comments and such, I also tried to do my own research. You know, the, the survey is not scientific. We know that. You can't, you can't base it on that. You can't base your decision on that. Maybe it helps give you a temperature in the room, but, but for the most part, I did a lot of research on my own in reaching out to people. There were a few concerns that people raised and a few kind of, you know, statements in, in favor and we heard some of them tonight. Economic development was the, was the big one along with, there's kind of a, a theme of nothing's changing. And, and so, I actually wanted to understand better exactly what might be changing and so, I decided it would be good for me to visit some restaurants and brew pubs in the area to get a feel for how they differ from each other and what might change if we allowed brew pubs. Hannah, can we put up my PDF? I, I took some pictures. Just to the first page of that PDF. So, if, if you could just make that full screen. I don't know if there's a possibility there. No, it's fine. Don't worry about it. So, here, here you can see, you know, there's a definite and strong emphasis on alcohol. They have a prominent bar. On the next slide, please. There's a menu. The next slide is a menu with a wide variety of beer options and that's only the first page. There's also craft brew and, 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 you know, there's a lot of alcohol options there. And this, this might seem like the sort of place we don't want in Provo, but it's actually already here. If you can go to the next slide. This is Red Robin. Definitely a strong emphasis on alcohol. You know, I, as you can see, restaurants can and do emphasize and market alcohol pretty aggressively in Provo. They try to appeal to families as well as drinkers and non-drinkers alike. I would venture to say that Red Robin with their bottomless free refills on, on french fries has, has many more families at it than a brew pub might. And legally, we could have a dozen more of these restaurants tomorrow if, if they wanted to open up business here. So, we, in summary, I couldn't find any material difference between brew pubs and the restaurants we currently have or can have in the city. They can have and do have similar marketing, an emphasis on alcohol and a variety of alcohol options. So, from my perspective, there is effectively no change. Materially, there's no change. There's also the, the argument in support of economic development. And, and I will say the research overwhelmingly supports that, you know, brew pubs do add to the economic development of a, of the, the city or town that they're in. If we could go to the next slide, this is a, a picture of Strap Tank. So, it's kind of hard to see in the lighting, but there's a bar area, but there's also about five times the amount of area that is served to patrons that aren't at the bar. This was a Wednesday night and I went there on a Wednesday because I didn't want to go on the busiest night of the week. I wanted to see how busy it was and as you can see, pretty busy. And, and a lot of these people are traveling from, you know, Provo or, or other areas to go to, to go to this brewery, this brew pub. So, from, from my perspective, it seems that a brew pub is a good opportunity to satisfy a, a market demand that is, that is here. And I do think it's only going to grow stronger as Provo's convention and tourism business grows with the airport expansion and, and the regional sports complex. Obviously, there's some downside too. Don't worry. I didn't leave you guys out. There's, there's obviously health and safety concerns. But as, as has been mentioned, the feedback from law enforcement in the surrounding communities that have brew pubs, they haven't seen an increase in, in public intoxication or DUIs, things like that. On a national level, brew pubs have been around for forty years now and so, I thought that there might be a body of research showing how, you know, the detriments of brew pubs, there wasn't. Staff was able to find that one, that one study that they, that they pointed to that, that showed that a correlation between brew pubs and DUIs. That being said, North Carolina is a mess. They have four point five brew pubs for every hundred and twenty thousand residents, so. They have 4.5 brew pubs for every 120,000 residents, so they have no regulations on how many brew pubs they can have or what we might call density. In North Carolina, beer on tap can be 15% alcohol by volume. I know some of you are thinking, hey, that's great compared to Utah where it's 5% by volume. That's some heavy beer. That's like sitting down and drinking a pint of wine, you know, considerable amount of alcohol. North Carolina also only requires 30% food sales compared to Utah 70%, so you're probably going to leave their microbreweries with a hangover because you're not eating any food. And they allow sales until 2:00 AM compared to Utah where it's 1:00 AM. You know, heck, I'd like to see us move that up to midnight in Provo, you know? I don't know, 1:00 AM, why? They have no drink limits, and their blood alcohol concentration for DUI is .08 compared to .05 for Utah. The point being, what leads to the safety problems in North Carolina is poor licensing laws, not necessarily brew pubs themselves. So, I guess the last point I'll make is, we received a lot of comments about teens and drinking, and I've got a 12-year-old, and I understand what...You know, I lived in Florida, grew up in Florida where there was a lot of drinking, and I've seen what happens with alcohol. You know, teenagers become even more idiots than they are already, and, you know, they drink and drive, and they participate in risky sexual behavior, and, you know, teenage drinking is a serious problem, not to mention all the things that are now on their cellphones that are probably going to keep them from getting into Harvard and running for political office due to alcohol and selfies. But I think all of the research that I read, there were a few themes that rose to the top, and a lot of it had to do with access. The problem with teenage drinking is access. And they suggested that to deter teenage drinking, you put high taxes on alcohol, you make it expensive. You enforce the minimum drinking age and crack down on people who are giving access to these teens, whether it be at, you know, drinking parties or retailers who aren't following the minimum drinking age. And all of these are licensing issues, not necessarily anything related to brewing or even marketing. So, in regards to teens, it seems that rather than focusing on brewing of alcohol, we should focus on the access of alcohol, and licensing is the key to restricting that. So, just a few thoughts for consideration as we kind of kick this off, and I've kind of shown my hand there, but I wanted to just share a few things I had learned along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoben. Mr. Sewell?
Well, I'll tip my hand, too. I don't want to sleep on the couch tonight, so...But more seriously, I appreciate all the comments that have been made. Let me just briefly summarize my understanding of kind of how people are feeling about this. As far as advantages, I've heard a number of social reasons, being inclusive, welcoming, friendly, diversity. There've been a number of economic reasons that have been given, downtown, free market, support business, those kind of things. So, those are the pros as I see them. My biggest concern is the health and safety side, and will this increase alcohol consumption? And what would the effect of that be in terms of the health and safety of our residents? Now, I know some people feel that there is no distinction between a brew pub and another restaurant that serves alcohol, and I think the implication there is that they would make no difference in alcohol consumption. And if I thought that was true, then I would perceive this as a proposal that has a lot of benefits and no real downside, and I think those of you who see it that way would probably see this as kind of much ado about nothing that we're even talking about this. But I don't see it that way, and let me try to articulate why I think they're different. And I, first of all, want to say that I think most people who are concerned about brew pubs understand what they are and have been to them, as I have. I think most who are opposed understand that the vast majority of our citizens who drink are responsible social drinkers. Probably almost everyone in this room who drinks probably fits in that category, and I'm familiar with that from my own family growing up. I had immediate family members that were as responsible and disciplined in terms of their drinking habits as anyone you would care to meet. So, I've seen plenty of good examples of that, but my experience and my reading is that if you increase the popularity of drinking, there's really no way to completely separate that from an increase in alcohol abuse and all that goes with that, even though the majority of people won't be susceptible to that, there is a correlation. So, first of all, I'd like to talk about why I think a brew pub is not exactly the same as another restaurant that serves alcohol. First of all, there's the focus. I'm a businessman, I've had experience building brands, and one of the things you want to look at when you make an investment is what's my unique selling advantage? You know, what's different about the product that I'm offering versus someone else? So, I think for a brew pub, the primary product is the alcohol. That's the differentiator. You've got a unique brand that's been developed at great cost, by the way. I understand that equipment is probably over $100,000 just to get the brewing equipment. So, you've got this unique brand and unique flavors that you've developed, and that's your differentiating factor. That's what you're going to focus on. If you look at websites, menus, you're going to tend to feature that more than the food. Now, maybe we have some restaurants that maybe are closer to that, that were just been pointed out. But in general, as I've compared brew pubs to our other restaurants that serve alcohol, I've noticed that difference. Most of our other restaurants, maybe with a few exceptions, tend to focus more on the food, and the alcohol is more of a secondary offering. So, I think that's important in a number of ways, kind of the message that it stands and who's comfortable going there and that kind of thing. I've been a few times. You know, I'm comfortable going to a brew pub if somebody invites me. My wife and I went with Counselor Harding and his wife a few weeks ago just to check it out, and I think we were pretty comfortable there. But I wouldn't take my kids there, I wouldn't take my grandkids there just because of, you know, it kind of emphasizes that more. And I know we have some families that wouldn't say that. They would say, I'd have no problem taking my kids there, but I've also heard from a lot of other folks that, well, no, I don't think I would. I'd probably take my kids or my grandkids to the Olive Garden. So, or, you know, someplace where the food is the primary offering. So, one result of that difference in focus is that there is going to be a difference in the amount of alcohol sold. A brew pub, because the alcohol is the primary offering, is going to come a lot closer to that 30% limit. You know, I don't have actual figures on that, but I would guess it's probably more in the 20% to 30% range, whereas a restaurant like the Olive Garden, for example, is you're going to probably be under 10%. I was curious about that, so I called one of the managers today, and he said, yes, that's true, we're probably under 10% of our sales, our alcohol. So, I think right there, you have a difference in sales at that point. And then, and difference in sales means a difference in consumption. Another factor that I think that makes them different is with a brew pub, you have an investor that has spent 100 grand or more in developing, getting the equipment, developing unique local flavors and brands, and now he's going to want to market that and make as good of a return as he can on that. It's not just the name. When I say brand, I mean more than just the name because I've seen brands from outside Provo with names like Provo St. Girl and, you know, things like that. But it's the brewed in Provo, the Provo-specific brand. I think that would be...have a lot of cachet and would pique people's interest, you know, that you have this beer brewed in Provo. Well, you know what Provo's like and why that would be, that would cause curiosity, I think. So, I...And let me contrast that. If Strap Tank, for example, was to sell some of their flavors to our restaurants, I think their primary focus in their marketing and advertising would still be to bring people to their restaurant. You know, they would want to sell some of their product here, too, but that wouldn't be where they would put their primary marketing. So, I think that's going to make a difference in sales as well. There's a fourth difference that doesn't really come into play, and that's distribution. Most brew pubs in the state do also distribute their alcohol to other restaurants in the area and even in other cities. We're not currently contemplating that, but a request for that will be coming. When Quinn met with me, he was very upfront about that, that they would likely be asking for that in a few years. So, you know, I think if we vote to approve a brew pub, we should probably be comfortable with the idea that, you know, that would be coming down the road. So, to finish up that point, I firmly believe that there is, there will be a difference in sales and consumption for having a brew pub versus a regular restaurant that serves alcohol. So, why does that matter? I'd like to go over a few statistics that may not be comfortable, but alcohol is probably one of the most dangerous drugs that we have. It kills about 88,000 people a year in the United States, which is more than are killed by heroin, cocaine, and prescription opioids all put together, which is around 70,000. And, you know, if you compare it to, like, e-cigarettes, for example, there's been a lot of concern, regulatory concern about new flavors and things that have caused some of our youth to die, and those numbers so far are very small, like 50 a year or something like that. And yet, we have great concern about making that product more appealing to our youth. And I kind of look at this the same way if we're introducing local flavors and brands, that it is going to be more appealing in a similar way. So, my main concern is that if we go down this road compared to not inviting the investment in a brew pub, that alcohol consumption will increase faster than it would have otherwise. And I'm not saying the effect would be dramatic. It'd probably be fairly small at first, but I think it would be significant over a long period of time, and that's my big concern, is the effect on the health and safety of our residents from that increased consumption. I would love to...You know, this is popular. It's very obvious that it's popular, although I don't think this, as has been mentioned, I don't think the survey was scientifically representative of the population, but...So, I'd love to be able to accommodate that, but not at the expense of the health and safety of our residents. Just one more point I want to make. When I look at increased consumption and the effects of that, I have to think of how many, over the next 40 years, how many more DUIs are there going to be? How many more deaths will there be from the direct effects of alcohol from drunk driving? How many more broken homes? How much more crime? All those things. And again, and in saying that, I recognize the vast majority of our drinking population are responsible drinkers, but again, from what I've read, there's no way to limit an increase in popularity of drinking solely to responsible drinking. So, for those reasons, I'm not in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Sewell. Mr. Fillmore?
This is a tough decision. That explains why we get paid so much to make these hard decisions on a city council, This issue is illustrative for me of the fact that reasonable men and women can differ, that men and women of goodwill can see things differently, that we perceive reality differently, that we predict the future differently. But I want to say just a few words about what this is not about. This is not about alcohol consumption versus no consumption. There's still plenty of opportunities in our city. I was told today we actually have over 60 alcohol licenses with various restaurants here in the city, so it's not an either-or, black or white. Secondly, I don't view this as a moral or religious decision. I've heard comments tonight that there's maybe that kind of an overtone. I view this as a health, safety, and welfare issue, what's best for the city. I don't see it as judgmental, good people versus bad people, and I readily acknowledge that there are many...The majority, I think, of people who consume alcohol are responsible drinkers, and I'm glad for that. It's the minority of drinkers I worry about, those people who end up imposing great social costs on their families and the rest of us. So, I think reasonable minds can differ, and certainly, certainly, there's been a ton of emails and text messages and phone calls and everything else come our way over this, and all from absolutely sincere people. Everyone who's spoken tonight, I don't doubt for a moment your sincerity or your good intentions. It's just that, I guess, the buck stops here on the dais, and we have to consult our own consciences. So, I readily acknowledge the potential benefits of a brew pub. Appears there's a consensus that that might be good to downtown business. It would make us perhaps perceived by those outside the state of Utah as more hospitable. It would generate some increment of additional sales tax revenue, and it would enhance a perception, I suppose, that we're more inclusive. So, I say it's not an easy decision. I will speak frankly and say that I would gladly trade a couple of brew pubs for the two dive bars we have downtown. I would do that in a heartbeat. Unfortunately, that's not the proposition presented to us. What's presented to us is more establishments with more alcohol consumption inevitably, and we just have to sort that out. So, my own cost-benefit analysis, I believe that the costs outweigh the benefits. I have several concerns about the recent polling we did, it was non-scientific, that's been acknowledged. What I'm struggling with is how the poll results totally are totally at odds with my district. I've had a few people comment on how they thought this would be worthwhile and inclusive and positive things for business, but the overwhelming comments I've gotten, I'm talking about not dozens, but a few hundred, are people saying, please, no. about not dozens, but a few hundred, are people saying, please, no. They perceive the public health and safety issues as being paramount. And so, I, I just, I can't see that poll as being representative, at least of District The, the point has been made already, we have many restaurants with alcohol licenses, and so what's the difference with a brew pub? And the difference for me is, is pretty simple. Restaurants generally promote their food, and they have beer or wine or something on the side, but that's not what they're promoting, they're promoting their food, and the alcohol is ancillary, and if you want some, great. With a brew pub, the beer and the other alcoholic beverages that go with it is paramount. That is the primary advertisement, the primary promotion. That's their reason for existence primarily, is promoting the alcohol. It's, it's the enticement factor, I guess, that, that Mr. Sewell is related to, that troubles me a bit. The whole purpose of the establishment, any establishment, any restaurant or brew pub is to make money, and you make money by marketing. What they're marketing is, is an opportunity to consume alcohol in a way that is uniquely cool, fun, hip, enticing, and that troubles me, because that is different than a normal Alcohol, I think we have to acknowledge, is a drug, and it has multiple public health consequences. The Centers for Disease Control, the World Health Organization have been very, very outstroken, outspoken, very strong in trying to curtail alcohol consumption in the U.S. and worldwide. It, it simply has so many substantially negative social consequences. I think we just can't ignore that. So, I concur with Mr. Sewell's summary of the research that he's been reviewing. And when we talk about marketing, I think we have to keep in mind that not just businesses get marketed, our city gets marketed. Provo has its own brand. It's been developed over decades by a lot of people who've worked hard to make Provo a very special and unique place, and I think that's, it's worth protecting and cherishing. It's part of what makes us unique here. I think we can still be inclusive and welcoming in our own unique way. I don't think alcohol is critical to that. If people want alcohol when they come and visit, there's plenty of opportunities. It's, it's striking to me that everyone here in this room, regardless of what side of the debate you're on, pro or con, we all moved to Provo and stayed here and loved Provo when it had, when there wasn't a single brew pub. That was a non-issue. But we moved here because we love Provo, and we've stayed here because of that. And brew pub is not critical to us remaining here and loving our city, I would hope. So, my point being, I guess, that every city, as a matter of federal law, has a right to establish its own community standards. In fact, that's what the city council is charged to do. And so, I need to reflect not only the majority view and opinion of my district, but my own. And I think it's important that we, while we no longer have prohibition, we are entitled to draw some lines. We can all differ on whether or that line should be drawn, but I, I will vote no. My problem is that it's, it's a painful thing, because however, whichever direction, yea or nay, anyone up here votes tonight, we're going to disappoint some of you, we're going to upset you. I'm sorry for that. I wish there was a, an easy consensus, that's just not going to happen. But in the end, when, for any ordinance that we pass, any amendment to zoning or anything else, we have to append, as a matter of law, a statement at the end of that enactment. And if we were to pass this zoning change, at the very end, it says, "The municipal council finds the proposed amendment or action reasonably furthers the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Provo City." And so, in, on balance, while I see some benefits that could come from this, I have to say I do not see that opening this up to brew pubs and associated businesses and activities would further the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Provo City. That's my opinion, my conscience speaking, and I'll live with that. I just can't subscribe to an ordinance with this at the end of it. It's a finding that we're required to make, a finding of fact that we believe that this change would further the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. Personally, I can't do that. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fillmore. Any other comments from the city council? Mr. Shipley?
Yeah, I've got a lot of notes. Let me see if I can get through some of them that are unique to what we've heard, because I, I'm persuaded by things that I've heard these last few weeks by, by you all. I'm persuaded by things I've heard tonight by fellow councilors. So, there's a lot of different things in my head. Let me, let me address a few things that have been talked about that I think maybe I have a different perspective on, and, and hopefully it's not redundant. So, so I'm, I'm happy that, you know, the per-bar ratio in Provo is one per sixty thousand. It's one per six thousand in Salt Lake. I'm happy that in Utah, the ABV, you know, the, the alcohol level in our average alcoholic drink is at five percent, where the national average is at seven percent. I'm happy that people have called the metro area of Provo and Orem the, the most sober area, metro area in all of the country. That, that, that's, I'm happy about that. I, I do think there are ill effects of, of overconsumption. As an aside, out of the top, like, twenty highest drinking areas, almost all of them are in Wisconsin. It made me think, there's something going on in Wisconsin. There's a lot of drinking there, not just the weather. But, but there are a couple of things that are, that are important, I think, to the conversation that we're having. So, so first of all, I, the lens that we look at the health and welfare and safety on any given law that we look at as a city council is, is somewhat subjective. It just is. If you look at health, safety, and welfare through the lens of your religion or your belief system, it can bring you to a different conclusion on what that means than the next person. It can. Just as an example, the, the science and data that's out there on brew pubs is not, doesn't promote any of the, the ill effects of, of alcoholism and alcohol abuse that, that sometimes we talk about in, in a meeting like this, because we're, we're worried about, you know, this is different than our belief system, this is different than what we perceive. There is data out there that if you drink in public and drink in a family setting, that it's actually a positive thing for your future drinking patterns and habits, and that if you were to not have that opportunity, that you would more likely drink in private, and that that's where most of the drinking abuse and alcoholism that has ill effects occurs. So, so there's some science, that, and actual data, and, and some of what we've been talking about tonight is speculation about health and safety risks, but not necessarily the data, the, the science. Another science or piece of data is that more expensive beer reduces, reduces consumption, reduces drunkenness. So, if I can go to a liquor store and get drunk for six dollars, and it takes me thirty dollars at a brew pub to get drunk, there's a difference there. There's a significant difference there. If I want drunkenness, I can do it for a lot less expensive somewhere different than a brew pub. More expensive brew, the science behind that, the data behind that says that it actually discourages drunkenness in a different way. As far as welfare of, of a city, I, I think we, we apply, again, different standards for different things. If we were talking about bringing a Buffalo Wild Wings to Provo, no one in here would be here, we wouldn't even be having this conversation, we wouldn't worry about it. And Buffalo Wild Wings would bring more alcohol consumption and increase in consumption than maybe the next brew pub that we're discussing. But because it's called Buffalo Wild Wings and because it's focused on wings supposedly that taste like garbage, and it's just there to bring people alcohol, some, for some reason, we don't talk about that. And, and here's another issue. If it's about access and appeal to, to alcohol, then we better stop the next 7-Eleven from opening on the next corner of, of a street, because if it's all about access and just ease of access, then don't put a convenience store or grocery store on the west side like we so desperately want, because that will make all of our children on the west side alcoholics, because they'll have access to alcohol through a new grocery store out there. The bottom line is, we are applying a standard through the lens that we want to apply a standard when it comes to health, welfare, and safety. The data, the information on safety is that our local police and the police that have brew pubs say, without any question, brew pubs do not bring disorderly contact. They don't bring DUIs, they don't bring problems related to alcoholism. They don't. And do we trust our safety personnel, or do we not? Are we going to allow fear to rule, you know, on something that we don't understand? Or are we going to allow people and professionals who work around this on a daily basis, and that's their job, and we trust them to do their job, to give us informed information on safety? So, health, safety, and welfare, I, all, my, my point of all that rant, and I apologize, is just to say that the lens we see health, safety, and welfare can be very different, depending on where we're sitting and where we're thinking and how we're thinking about things. And there's always a different perspective. Ours is not always right, there's not a right or wrong, there's somewhere in between, and we're trying to grapple with, with what we realize are real concerns as a council. We've, we've listened to and read many real concerns about brew pubs, and, and we have to be careful and, and take those into perspective, but we can't sit and apply a different standard to different things based on our beliefs as legislators. And what I mean by that is that when we talk about how many deaths happen from alcohol, we also should probably mention how many deaths happen unnecessarily from obesity and sugar intake, right? We've alluded to that, but the bottom line is, we wouldn't be having a conversation about the next sugar store that we open here in Provo, the next candy shop, the next soda shop, the next, the next cookie shop, because we do really good things in Provo with cookies and soda, right? We make it really appealing to our children. And there are more unnecessary deaths in the United States from obesity and, and diet than there are from alcoholism in the United States, as far as unnecessary, unnecessary deaths. So, I, I think we have to apply a consistent standard, is all I'm saying. We can't come in here and say, our belief system dictates that we apply this standard, and then for the next thing that we talk about, like a Buffalo Wild Wings or a, a cookie store, we're, we're going to completely throw health and welfare out, out the window, because that doesn't look and feel different, that doesn't look and feel scary to us, and, and we're comfortable with those things. I, I think we got to get past that, and if we're going to apply some significant standard to health, welfare, and safety, we better be consistent about it, because the moment we're not consistent about it, we're, we've been talking about inclusion all night, making sure people feel included and welcomed, that's our motto, is welcome. The moment that we start applying our own standard to things and being inconsistent with what health, welfare, and safety is, is the moment that we look like hypocrites, and we look like we're self-righteous individuals that are applying only our standard and not allowing an objective standard to be applied to different things. And, and I, and I, and I don't want that for Provo. I want to be objective about how we look at health, safety, and welfare. Sorry, I've gone off. Can I spend just a few more minutes on a few more things? The staff from Provo City has, has, has compiled a lot of good data, and the planning commission put together some good feedback. I feel like we've kind of just overlooked it all. You know, I, in, in the, in the excitement and emotion of tonight, we've, we've overlooked the fact that staff has put together some really good information, some really good research, and, and I would just, I would just call all of us to look at that research instead of just going with the emotion of, of, of this evening. Let me, let me say a few more things. I'm sorry.
You've hardly said anything since you got elected, so this is good. Doesn't say much, but when he does, watch out.
People are going to be so confused by me. I've never had a drink in my life. But I don't like hypocrisy and different standards for different things, and I do want Provo to be consistent about how we look at things and be inclusive. And I do think inclusivity is, is so important. We can, we can give lip credit to it, but there's something more to it than just how we talk about it. Inclusion is so important. We need people to feel welcome, and not just welcome if they look and act like we do. We've talked tonight about the appeal to youth and how significant that risk is to the appeal to youth. And, and maybe this is my perspective as an Idaho kid that grew up with a lot of drinkers, you know, on the weekends, growing up in high school. Brew pubs that existed in Idaho Falls where I grew up had nothing to do with teenagers' decisions to go and drink. I'm sorry, it, it didn't even cross any of their minds. It did not influence them one bit on drinking. What influenced them was stupidity and curiosity and peer pressure among, among friends. It had nothing to do with what the local, you know, institutions were doing with alcohol. So, I just, no, you know, our kids are not going to start drinking because of brew pubs. They're going to start drinking because of a hundred other reasons that aren't good reasons that we need to look at if we're really serious about getting in front of the alcohol problem, and, and it's not brew pubs. There's no data out there to that end. There's, there's speculation and fear to that end, but there's no data to that end. Let me speak real quick to restaurants versus brew pubs, real quick. You know, I've talked to a bunch of different restaurants, I've talked to, I've tried to do as much research as I possibly can on this. And talking to Strap Tank, Strap Tank has an eighty-twenty mix right now, twenty percent alcohol and eighty percent food, okay? So, so we can't be up here speculating that we're at the seventy-thirty. These institutions do not even want to get close to thirty percent. They do not advertise their alcohol at all. They don't market it at all outside of the restaurant, because they're worried that they'll lose their liquor license the moment they step past thirty percent. So, this whole idea of us just going out of our way to market and advertise with that seventy-thirty split is crazy. If, if I can, if I can market my product and package and sell it, that's different. But that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about having a seventy-thirty split, and there is no restaurant that puts the money into having a brewery that will want to risk getting over that thirty percent threshold and wasting their investment into what they did. Strap Tank's at eighty-twenty, they market their food, they do a good job marketing their food, they have good food. I better wrap up. That was way too long.
Did you take his, that as a challenge when he said, "We don't want to be here till midnight," or "We probably won't be here till midnight"? You said, "Oh, yeah, we will."
We can be here a long time, yeah. No, I've got a few more notes, I just better be quiet. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley.
I will be voting for it, because I think we need to start applying consistent standards in Provo, and it has nothing to do with drinking, has nothing to do with alcohol, it has to do with us being consistent in what we allow in Provo, and why we allow it, and being a place that's consistent about the standards that we apply and why we do it.
Thank you. Please, no applause, thanks. Mr. Harding.
All right. So, I'd like to thank everyone for coming, and the many that are not here, but put in their, their, their input, submitted their, their thoughts to the, to the council. Grateful for staff and for all of their work on this issue, and grateful to fellow council members, council members, for the work that, that you've put into this and for the thoughtful discussion so far. I also look at this from a public welfare perspective, and I have read the NIH documents and the, and the WHO documents, and alcohol abuse is a serious societal problem, it has high societal costs. There was a, a comment earlier that, that not all, but some, will enter a brew pub and later on in life will become alcoholic, and they will, they and their family and the society will experience the impact of, of that development. And, and my heart aches for those future consequences. I think some, but not all, will have their first exposure to alcohol at a friend's home or at their own home. And perhaps some of that could have been from, from alcohol that was purchased and brought home for consumption, because there was not good alternatives that are out and for, out in the, the public consumption, as, as was discussed earlier. The consumption of alcohol in public, in, in these restaurants, in this brew pub setting, is the safest environment for, for it to happen. And I can't help but think that, that we would have less of, less problems in the future with alcohol... with alcohol abuse by allowing for public consumption in safe situations than if we don't have those opportunities and more people choose to purchase their alcohol at the grocery store, at the 7-Eleven, at the steak liquor store and take it home. So from that perspective, I do believe, I do believe that there will be some impact, but I think the net impact will be less, there will be less alcohol abuse by making this change. And just wanted to mention again just how small of a change that we are talking about in this land use code and allowing this land use in many ways comparable to what we already allow with alcohol being available at restaurants. I do think it is time to review alcohol licensing generally in Provo and take a look at that. And I think that is probably a better place to address any public health concerns that we have. And I think it's worth taking a look at other cities and seeing best practices and crafting some licensing policies that will, that will be right for our community. So I will be voting in favor of the proposal tonight. The bigger concern that I have, something that's kind of stuck with me much more through this whole conversation, in large part because in looking at what is being proposed, I saw this as a very minor adjustment to our code. But obviously it has struck a nerve with the community. And, you know, in some ways I feel that the community response has been much greater than, not than justified, but compared to what a small change this actually is to our code. And I think that that is indicative of some underlying issues that are related to this proposal but are much broader, much bigger than this proposal. I was part of a conversation and I was not the one sharing this, so I won't mention initially who was talking about it, but I was listening to a conversation and it really has stuck with me. Someone had asked them when they were running for council, "What are you going to do to keep us from becoming like Salt Lake?" And that hit me kind of hard. I grew up in Salt Lake. And so my first thought is, oh, well, you know, we don't want to, don't want to be Salt Lake for, you know, any number of reasons, you know, and just kind of what perhaps someone in Provo, kind of the stereotype of what someone in Provo might have of Salt Lake. But that wasn't the point that they were making. The point that they were making was there is such a divide in the community in Salt Lake. It really is very much an us versus them mentality. And there is this chasm and I experienced that in Salt Lake. There was contempt. There was intolerance. But that intolerance and that contempt went both ways. And it was not a healthy, it wasn't healthy, that aspect was not healthy in their community. And it felt like you couldn't be in the middle. You couldn't try to bridge that gap because both sides prevented that. And so that, it made me, you know, I've been in Provo now more than 13 years and so it kind of made me think back to my experiences in Salt Lake. And there are many aspects that I don't miss about living in Salt Lake and a lot of that was because of that divide. And it has been a nice reprieve being here in Provo because we haven't gotten to that point yet. But I fear that some of that is coming. I live in and represent downtown Provo and the surrounding neighborhoods. I love the diversity of people that are my neighbors. But we need to be careful, I think, as a community, that we don't drive wedges, that we don't subscribe to this us versus them mentality. And it goes both ways. It goes both ways. We can be respectful of others. We can be respectful that they may have different choices than us, but we can also be respectful that they have different reasons for living in Provo or they have different values than we do. And that cuts both ways. We need to be respectful and be, find ways to coexist and to show that tolerance both ways and not have that contempt. I do think we need to be very careful about calling, calling into question other people's motives. And I think we need to be careful about calling other people hypocrites or their motivations hypocritical. We need to be very careful of that. We need to give each other the benefit of the doubt. And this goes always. And I commit to being better at that. I'll do my best to be better at that as a council member and I hope each one of us will make that commitment. Try to understand from other people's point of views. Try to, try to, again, give them the benefit of the doubt. And let's see if we can grow together, progress together with love and harmony. And maybe that sounds a little cheesy, but I believe that's possible. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. Do you want to make a comment? Go ahead.
Do I want to make a comment? Yeah, I do want to make a comment. So there has been some discussion about the health, safety and welfare of Provo citizens and that's our top priority. And that's the lens and the filter that we use to make a lot of decisions, as it should be. But I think our application of health, safety and welfare is oftentimes arbitrary. Sometimes I think we're legislating things arbitrarily. Anytime we use numbers, it's fairly arbitrary, right? So saying someone shouldn't be able to buy alcohol after midnight or after 1:00 a.m. or after 2:00 a.m., those numbers are, feel really arbitrary to me. Moreover, we haven't legislated sugar and that's a serious health concern in our community. Caffeine as well is a legal addictive stimulant. It's considered a drug. I bought caffeine this afternoon at Maverick and consumed it on the way here. No one cared. But there's a lot of caffeine in our community and it is, it is a legal addictive stimulant. Air quality is something that we do not, we're not legislating, not enough. Air quality, according to a recent report by a BYU professor, is taking two years off of the average lifespan of citizens of this community. It's a serious implication to our health and safety and welfare. And we're arbitrarily deciding not to create a big ruckus about it. Texting and driving is another thing that we have arbitrarily decided not to create a big discussion around, but maybe we should. When I talked to our police chief, he said that his number, his top concerns were cartels and texting and driving. And here we are today talking about alcohol, something that we already have in our community that people are generally responsible consuming and we're arbitrarily saying that it's on trial and it's good to some extent, but it's bad to some extent. And some people can have it, but other people shouldn't. And it, it's very arbitrary. And that's not something I'm comfortable with. So I think when we consider the health, safety and welfare of citizens, we should be more methodical and we should look at the data and we should consider what's already on tap in Provo. Someone mentioned Wisconsin and I think Wisconsin's a great place, albeit I've never been there. I also like Nebraska and Minnesota and I really like Canadians because they have this reputation for just being the nicest people, right? And wouldn't it be great if Provo had that reputation? They're just the nicest people, all out the nicest people. And everyone's friendly and everyone's welcoming. And if you go to the Midwest, you can find a friendly person and they'll tell you where to find a good bar and they'll tell you where to find a good church. They're not mutually exclusive. And I hope that's how Provo can be. I hope that we can be that welcoming and I hope if you drink, we'll say, "Welcome home." I hope if you, if someone moves to town and they have two dads, I hope we say, "Welcome home." I hope if they move to town and they dress differently than me or eat differently than me or consume less sugar than me, I hope we say, "Welcome home." Because this is their home too. And the concern has been raised that this isn't family friendly. And I think that that is, again, arbitrary because there are some families who think that this kind of consumption of alcohol is family friendly. And Disneyland and Disney World are very family friendly, kid centric places and they serve alcohol. And there's no reason why this couldn't be a part of our family friendly culture as it is in so many families in Provo already. So I'll be voting for this.
Thank you. Well, I will want to make some comments as well. If you're keeping tabs, I think the drama has left the room. So what I say may not make any difference in the long run, but I do have some thoughts about this. I've been struggling with this one more than I think any vote I've had on the city council. I think some people who know me well are kind of surprised that it's been hard for me. And I think part of it is that I have great respect for this community, for all of you who are here and for the many good people on both sides that I've spoken to who've given me very articulate, very thoughtful, very persuasive arguments. And I learn how I think by arguing and debating and I occupy a position for a while and then I try another position and I've gone back and forth on this. I think actually when I first spoke with Quinn Peterson about this, at the time it seemed more or less like a no-brainer. And then it got more and more complicated the more I listened. One of the things I'm particularly sensitive to is the way in which arguments get polarized and when they get polarized, certain things get emphasized over others. And I try to listen for the whole story rather than just the part that I'm listening to. But I think for a while I was just kind of reacting to all the polarization. It was making it very difficult for me to think clearly. I feel like there was, there were arguments that, as we've heard tonight, that were amplifying the danger that's posed to the health and safety of our community. And those arguments have also amplified the difference between a brewpub and a restaurant. And as we've already heard, I think it's important that we not lose sight of the things we already allow and how many things we already allow are far more dangerous to health and safety than this particular proposal. And I am serious about public health and safety, but I also don't want to moralize about a person having a drink with a meal. And I think that's been made clear by everyone here, that we all, I think, agree that we don't stigmatize or want to anyway anybody who makes choices that are different than our own or that are involving alcohol in a responsible way. I should mention, I had my first exposure to a beer in the woods in Connecticut when I was 14 and it was terrible beer, but I liked it. And I pursued that experience for quite a number of years. And it was fun while it lasted. But I made some personal decisions. It took me in a different direction and I have lived my life around people who live different lifestyles all my life. And I take diversity and inclusion extremely seriously. It's one of my great passions and it's certainly one of the reasons why I ran for city council. I did allude to the fact that I am close to people who've struggled with alcohol addiction. And so that's also influencing my thinking a little bit. Anyway, on the side of people who are in favor, I've heard an amplification of how vital this is to downtown business activity and then a sort of, you know, de-emphasis on the difference between a brewpub and a restaurant. And I've said this before, but it seems to me to be a bit of a contradiction. If it is vital to business to have a brewpub, then it must be because it's different than what we are already allowing downtown. It just cannot make sense to me otherwise. So to say that we need a brewpub for business is to acknowledge that it isn't like any other kind of culinary experience that's currently offered in Provo. Otherwise, we wouldn't be asking for it. And if it is different, then I'd like to think about what that difference is and why it matters. And I think we've heard a lot about that, so I won't repeat a lot what's already been It may, I have not been able to persuade myself that a brewpub will lead to the kinds of dangers that have been described, but it's not entirely benign either. I think, again, it is like a restaurant, it isn't like a restaurant and that difference can and might make some differences down the road. The fact is, I think one of the reasons it's being argued that it's vital to downtown business is that it expands the variety and quantity of alcohol offered in our community. And I don't think anyone here is denying that that's the case. And so although I am not convinced that this would lead to the health risks and dangers that have been described, my concern is that, well, let me rephrase that. I am concerned that we have been a little bit too alarmist and perhaps exclusionary in the way we've been talking about it. And when I say "we," I mean the entire community. I'm not pointing fingers, but I think we need to be careful not to equate a beer with a meal with moral depravity. I've seen little evidence that one brewpub would have such an impact, as has also been said, but it's not hard to see that if it's vital to or desired by downtown business, that a successful model of a brewpub and a multiplying model of a brewpub of this sort would have some impact and that that impact would potentially be negative. I guess I'm not really moved by either argument, which is why I've struggled so much with this. If it isn't that much different than a restaurant, that's maybe one reason to say yes. Frankly, it's also a reason to say no. Why is it necessary? Why is it something that we really need, that we can't do without? And I didn't really come to my feeling definitively about this until about 24 hours ago. And my question to the community is, have we exhausted our creativity to make downtown as appealing and attractive to visitors and locals alike? Will a brewpub make the economic difference? And perhaps it might, but if it does, that seems to signal something is not quite right in my mind with the culture that we're building in downtown. I just think the risks grow with the success of the business model that we're talking about. And let me give you a little bit of an example of what I'm talking about and where I'm coming from on this. I'm a big fan of Valour. I go there often. I'm always the oldest guy there. Maybe once in a while, there's some guy my age who's like, you know, dancing with me and we're both looking at each other like, "You too, huh?" I love live music and one of the things I would love to see is more live music downtown. Quinn and I have talked about this, I've talked to the mayor about this. I'm passionate about it. You all know the story of Neon Trees and you know how they got big success. And they were interviewed by Scott Simon of NPR years ago. And this interview came to my mind last night and I went back and read it. Elaine Bradley says in the interview, she's one of the members of the band, "If I hadn't moved to Utah, I definitely wouldn't be in the position I'm in now." Scott Simon says- Scott Simon says, "If I may, I don't understand how you get music clubs when they don't sell alcohol." Bradley, "Yeah, it's very interesting, because the clubs in Provo don't do it. I thought that was going to be a terrible thing, but funny enough, I think it actually creates a culture of music appreciation, because there's nothing else to do. So you end a song, and people are there watching you. There's no clanking bottles and loud drunk shouting. It's all very much about the band. And so it's really a great kind of a litmus test. These kids are totally paying attention to you, and if you can get them to move and dance and respond, you know you're doing something right. If they're just blankly staring at you, you know you have a problem. So it's actually good that way." Scott Simon speaks to Tyler Glenn. "Tyler, haven't you actually said that some of the LDS prohibitions against drinking and drugs might actually have helped your band?" Glenn, "10,000 percent. In the beginning especially. To have a sober audience in front of you that is really engaged in responding, it really helped us gauge what songs were working and craft a good live show. It also gave us an opportunity to really build an avid fan base instead of just casual bargoers liking the nightlife and also liking your music." So my point is that everybody should be as a teetotaler as I am. Although I'd be happy to encourage you to do that. But it is to say that a business model that says that we need more variety of drinking options downtown to be successful, I think, as I've thought about it more, hasn't tapped its own creativity and might be using alcohol as a crutch, in the same way that music clubs might be using it. I've been to Dry Bar Comedy. I love the clean comedy scene that's happening in Provo. I've been to many of the other increasingly fun activities downtown. And I want to see more live music return, as I've said. All of these things are proactive ways to entice diverse audiences, and I think they've been successful at this, without using what I consider to be a decidedly uncreative option of serving more varieties of alcohol. And I would just say, let's keep that model going. Provo is awkward. I say, keep Provo awkward. Let me just say a word about, that was a joke, but nobody laughed. Okay. You know the phrase, Portland is weird. Okay, a friend of mine says Provo is awkward. I guess I'm just interested in that model. I have no bias against a brew pub. But my inclination in the final analysis is that I'd like to see us try some more creative options. But if it looks like this is going to pass, I want to personally offer to anyone offended by my vote against this tonight that I will take you out and buy you a beer at the new brew pub in Provo. And I mean it. I mean it. And if we don't have a brew pub, I was going to offer in a local restaurant. So just don't break my bank. If there's like 100 of you offering, then forget it. The deal's off. But I really, really do not want, the thing that made me sick about this vote all along was that I do not want this to be an excuse to become a divided community. If this is the thing, right, upon which civilization hangs for Provo, then I'd say we've got a problem. We're not doing enough work to make ourselves a real community if this is the thing, the symbol that unites or divides us. So I hope that we can do better to build a real sense of community so that these kinds of issues don't feel quite so divided. That said, I want to say this has been a very pleasant experience. And I haven't felt, I've felt people who feel very passionately on both sides, but no one has berated me. And I've had dignified differences of opinion and beautiful conversations with lots of different kinds of people. And I love that about this responsibility of being on the city council. So I'm going to be voting against this for the reasons that I've explained. All right, this is a little bit of an unusual, we've all spoken much longer than we usually do. And I don't know if there's any other comments or discussion that we want to have as the city council. Bill Fillmore is signaling. Yes, Mr. Sewell.
Just really quick, I think at this point, the most important thing is the community kind of thing that you and Mr. Harding were mentioning. I just want to mention a couple of things real quick. I actually kind of like that this was a split vote, four to three, because we have, you know, community members that really feel passionately about this. And there's a lot on both sides, so that seems appropriate. Also, as far as the struggles that we have up here, you know, trying to represent people and voting our conscience and all of that, I just want to commend everyone to an article that Council Harding wrote on his blog. It's something like Yield to Common Sense. It's really worth the read if you want to kind of get into the struggles that we face. I want to thank all of you who came. I did feel a real effort to be respectful here of differences of opinion, and I appreciate that. And I just want to tell one last story. I know this is kind of weird, but I was expecting to be crucified, frankly, for taking the stand that I did. And, you know, there were a few people that I guess did that. And I was sitting in church on Sunday, and yeah, I'm religious. But one of the people I thought was really going to go after me, sitting right there, Tosh, and he just, you know, he said that he disagreed with my position, but he was very kind about it. And I actually got a tear in my eye. I was just sitting there. Anyway, thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
We haven't voted yet.
Yes.
Yeah.
That is true.
I'm counting votes. I was curious, if your decisions, Mr. Handley, were purely economic? I mean, did you make this decision based on the economics? So we don't have any other businesses like this versus this is like any other business?
No, my argument is that I'm not persuaded that this is the thing, the most important thing that we need to stimulate economic activity downtown. And if it is, then I think we need to rethink our philosophy.
Okay. And I would just say, I don't think that was the impetus of this proposal, was it?
I thought it was very clearly stated that this was desired by the Downtown Provo, Inc. and requested by the Convention Center for the sake of improving business.
Okay. Interesting.
Am I getting that wrong?
Well, that may, I mean, that may have been part of it. But I would also say that citizens with, you know, no economic investment also desired it. I mean, I just think there's a lot of different ways to look at it, but I see what you're saying.
No. I mean, I thought that was the number one impetus. When I was asked, where is this coming from, I thought that was the answer. It was coming from the Downtown Provo Alliance and from the business community.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I recognize that lots of other people have other reasons why they might like it.
Okay. But you're just focusing on the economic. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Well, if there's no further discussion, then this is an implied motion. I should mention, I didn't mention this earlier, this item was heard at the Planning Commission meeting on January 8th, 2020. And this is the second hearing. Mr. Harding?
I'd like to make a motion that we substitute the implied motion, or substitute what the...
Substitute the exhibit to which the implied motion applies?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, to be the one that is drafted that includes a sunrise clause on this so that we can get the proper licensing in place before this land use becomes permitted. And I believe that's on the screen.
Hannah, can you scroll up to the Part II Paragraph, no, Part IV Paragraph D to show them that language?
So there's the language on the screen. So this is a sunrise clause that means that the permitted land use does not, the newly permitted land use does not go into effect until we have amended our beer licenses and regulations.
So that's a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Sewell, any discussion? All right. I'll call for a vote on the substitute motion to include, yes, Mr. Sewell.
Well, just one comment, just to clarify. My understanding is that this would have no effect until we did do the licensing, so it makes sense to me to tie them together.
Yes.
And to be clear, both for the public and just for the council. So the motion, all this motion, this motion doesn't pass the law. It substitutes an exhibit. If this motion passes, then there will need to be another vote on the implied motion, which will now have a new exhibit for the law to go into effect.
Okay. All right. All in favor of this substitute motion, please indicate. The voting is unanimous. So now I go return to the implied motion with the substitute that we've just approved. All in favor. All opposed. So that is Mr. Fillmore, Mr. Handley, and Mr. Sewell opposed, and Mr. Hoben, Mr. Shipley, Mr. Harding, and Ms. Ellsworth in favor. So four to three in favor. All right. If there is no objection, we will now adjourn by unanimous consent.